... provisions of open meeting law GL 330A 18 and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This is a meeting of the Northborough, Southborough Regional School Committee, Northborough School Committee, Superintendents, yeah, Southborough Public School Committee, and a Superintendent Union Number Three. Will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend meetings can be found on our district website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technology means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite the best efforts, we will post on the district website any audio or video recording transcripts and/or comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So I call the region, um, the combined open meeting of Wednesday, June 24, 2020, to, um, order at 6:05. So I'll make the motion for the regional school committee.
Do I have a... huh?
Do you want seconds now?
Um, I don't think we need a second to call to order, do we? No. So for Northborough?
I call the Northborough School Committee to order, as well as the Superintendent Union Number Three to order.
Okay, so Keith LaBelle is Northborough in a Superintendent's Union. And I need Southborough. Anyone?
Hi, this is Kamali Omeili. Um, I call the meeting as well.
Hi Kamali, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so Kamali Omeili calls North, Southborough. Um, okay, so we're gonna, so our first adjutant item tonight is, um, the school committee's statement on justice and equity. So we're gonna start by giving, um, Greg, I'm gonna have Greg give some context to this and what he's proposing, and then we will introduce his statement. Um, we would like to encourage all members, uh, present to limit discussion to the statement and intended formation of a working group that we will deep diver, that we will deep diver, we will deep, that, we will deep dive into the issue like later, after we have the working group together. Um, this is intent, this is an intended process to do so, where time stakeholders available information will lend itself best to the thorough review process. We also encourage the committees to consider a unified front of the statement. However, each member or committee can speak and vote from the heart as the autonomous members that they are. So Greg, do you wanna start off with this?
Sure. Thank you, Chairperson. So over the past several weeks, I've received many emails from alumni, parents, and citizens asking a simple question, well not a simple answer, which is what more can we do as an educational community to improve in areas of equity, inclusion, and diversity? Basically, how can we do better for our students? I believe we have an outstanding educational system. However, being an outstanding system does not mean that there's not work to be done and improvement to be made. Our students are from culturally diverse and linguistically different backgrounds, and as a district, we need to sharpen and tune our cultural lens. This is not new work to our, our district, or not a new conversation. Educators and leaders have been engaged in deepening their understanding of topics of implicit bias, equity, diversity, racism, and so forth. We've been engaged in book studies, conversations, we've had speakers, we've been attended professional development. However, we've only scratched the surface in regards to the work. A great system acknowledges its areas for growth. It does not stop until all students get what they need. Later this evening, I'm proud to prevent, present the reauthorized district strategic plan, Vision 2026, educate, inspire, and challenge, and I'm confident that the community will see that this work is immersed in the work that we need to do and is outlined in the plan. It speaks to equity and opportunity and the work that lies ahead. To accelerate this, I'm creating an equity task force, which will include representation from our educational community, students, alumni, faculty and staff, parents, citizens, school committee members, district leaders, will be invited to the task force with the goal of looking at the work through the lens of equity, inclusion, and diversity, and to see what more we can do to ensure that our students are prepared for the world of work, education, and citizenship. This, many of the emails that I received, I was glad to see that it was not you, it was not the educational community. It emphasized "we," that "we" as a community, educational community, meaning parents, students, families, district and school leaders are all part of making our system better. In the next couple days and weeks, I will communicate more information about the task force. I'm inviting those interested who would be willing to participate. And really, the idea is for that task force to begin taking a real close look at the strategic plan and making sure that through the lens of equity, diversity, inclusion, we're not missing any essential action steps. And later this evening, I'll provide more information about the reauthorized district plan.
Um, so I'll read, um, the statement. So Keith Couture and I spoke last week, and, and Roger as well, and came up with a statement, um, that we would like to present to you tonight. Um, so it's "As we observe recent events in our nation unfold, we, the Northborough, Southborough, and regional school committees, recognize it is our responsibility to ensure that we create and maintain a welcoming community free from racism for all students. We recognize that this is of the utmost important to make this an ongoing priority, and we are committed to continuing the work to make sure that diversity, equity, and inclusion are embraced in practice for all our students, families, faculty, and staff."
So for audience sharing this evening, um, I just, we will be using the, um, we will be promoting those who'd like to share to panelists, um, to share their thoughts. Um, so if you, if you would like to share, please in the chat, add your, um, your name, your street address, and, and then I will promote you to, um, audience sharing.
So Keith, do you wanna, should we, do you wanna make a motion to?
Yeah, I think before we do that, Mr. Martino, we were intending to, um, entertain motions and a bit of discussion from the committee on the statement. So on behalf of the Northborough School Committee, I move to accept the aforementioned statement on justice and equality as read into record this evening, and to authorize the superintendent to form a task force to investigate this matter and make recommendations accordingly.
Second. Okay, so wait a second. So Keith, motioned, and Joan, second, for Northborough? Southborough?
I so moved for Southborough.
Who's that? Is that Couture?
Couture. Yep, sorry.
And do I have a second?
Kamali Omeili, I second.
And then I so move for the region?
No, I'll second that.
Is that Paul Bucka?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, so Kathy Keith for the region, and Paul, um, Bucka, second. So we just wanna open it up for, um, if anyone has anything to share or thoughts on, um, the statement.
Kathy, did we do the union?
Oh, and the union, and do we, yeah, no.
So I also move, uh, for the union.
I'll, Kelly Gannett will second for the movement, uh, for the union.
Okay. Well, and Kelly Gannett. Okay.
So Kathy, it's Dan. I'm happy to kick it off if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead.
So, um, I see this statement. I understand it. Um, I have a concern about the word "create" that was used by the chairs. Um, someone, that word must have been specifically placed there for a reason, and I'd like to know what that reason is, because if we have, if we do not have a welcoming, um, inclusive environment in our community, I would like to know, um, you know, there's always unfortunately outliers, but I think that, in my experience in this community, um, over the last number of decades, has been it's very welcoming and, you know, very, um, you know, we have diversity in our community. It's not like other communities, um, but we have levels of diversity. We have, um, I've seen wonderful acts of kindness in our, in our community over the years. Um, if we haven't created this, you know, I, I'd like to know what the, you know, the chair is meant by that word "created." They must be saying we don't have it, and, and if we don't have it, then I, I'm concerned that we just had, we have the exact opposite. So I'm, I'm, I'm very interested in why that word was specifically chosen.
Miss Couture. So I can, I can speak to that a little bit, Dan, and this, this was a joint effort. Um, I'm the outgoing chair, so this was kind of a legacy item that I, I had worked on before Roger was elected, um, last Thursday. But we, um, you know, we did talk about that, and there's nothing about the statement that's intended to undermine all the good work that's already been done and all the thought that's put into, um, these issues leading up to this point in time. Uh, it's really just merely to represent an openness to making progress in this area going forward, um, making things even more, you know, um, welcoming and inclusive, and really taking a hard look at, uh, you know, if, what, what else remains to be done in this area.
Right, so, and that's all good. I agree with all of that. It just, it, it doesn't say that to me. It says we need to create it, which we haven't done, and, and I'm afraid that we're sending a message that the exact opposite has happened in our community. We have failed to create that kind of welcoming environment for all of our students, and, and, you know, I, I guess I don't see that. You must be, you must see that, and, and maybe the chair, the each chair sees that, and I just, if they would share what experience it, they've had that, um, that led to that, honestly, that's the only word that kind of jumped out at me, and I'm, and I'm, you know, my concern is the messaging that is put out to the community that we don't have this in Northborough and Southborough. We don't have this within our learning community. We need to create it.
Can I point out something, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Keith LaBelle?
Yep.
I'm in response to Mr. Klanda's comment. It's, the way I read that sentence is that it says to create and maintain a welcoming community free of racism for all students. So to me, what, if there's a student, you know, we, we strive for the utopia we wanna create. So if there's a single student who's been left out, which I think you acknowledged is a possibility a moment ago, then we're trying to create it for all. So I, to me, it's about creating for all, not just the word "create." So that's a very different, um, interpretation of that sentence.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's, that's, I, I understand your interpretation. My fear is you're never going to, with 1,500 students, you're never going to create something that is perfect for anyone's belief. Uh, and, and anyway, I just, I, I honestly think that the, the, the school district has done incredible work in ensuring that we have a very welcoming environment for all of our students. Um, you, if, my point was, you are always gonna have outliers who don't see that that is a priority, and you're not gonna appease them. You're not gonna create something for them, clearly. I, I would not. Um, you know, so anyway, my, that is my one concern. I don't wanna take up the all night on it, but I have a significant issue with, um, what the chairs are suggesting is, you know, is, is needed in our community that is, that is not there, and, and, you know, what, what our community is gonna read into, which I just did, gonna read into, whoa, we've got a major problem in Northborough and Southborough. We're in stage one. We need to create something that, that unfortunately is not there.
And if I could, uh, through the chair, if I could all make a comment, and I think that, you know, I, I hear your concern, but I, I don't actually think that it should be a concern at this point. You know, even the process of creating something, it's not a one-time process, really. So I think that, I think you should really focus on that we ensure, uh, that we create and maintain. And I think it's an ongoing process, you know, simply thinking that, you know, you, you, once you create something one time, you're done. I don't think we wanna give that impression. We wanna, I think, give the impression at this point that this is something we're continually looking at, um, you know, both, um, creating, modifying, maintaining, and it shouldn't detract from what we've built as a community. Um, and I, I think we'll also see, um, there'll be more, I guess, communications about this in the future. Uh, I have no doubt that we'll be refining some things as the task force moves forward. So I, I think, I actually appreciate, you know, your concern about it, but I, I don't think it's gonna create, if I overuse the word, I don't think it's gonna create a, a big issue, you know, for folks at this point in time in the community.
Right, that's, that's my concern, Roger. I mean, we, we should always, you know, as you said, continue to enhance, um, you know, our programs, enhance the, uh, you know, um, the welcoming atmosphere that we have for, for every race, you can create in our communities. And, um, that, anyway, that's my, I don't know why that word was chosen. Um, I think there's a variety of other words that would demonstrate to the public that we've already done great work, and we're gonna enhance and only work to improve it.
Madam Chair, this is Kathleen. I'd like to respond if I could.
Kathleen, Paul Bucka was raising his hand first. I'll be, oh, you can talk afterwards, okay?
Sure.
Go ahead, Paul.
Thanks, Kath. So, so a couple of things. I mean, I, I hear Dan's, uh, point there, and, and I think Roger's emphasis on continuous improvement and, and, you know, maintaining some vigilance to make sure that we don't slip, uh, slip back from those continuous improvements, I think is, you know, is, is also well said. A, a bigger concern I have is that it's, you know, I, I don't know that we should necessarily be focused just on races. Um, you know, there are, there are, you know, there are ways to make people feel uncomfortable, uh, based on a lot of things besides just the color of their skin. And I think we should be, I think we should be more inclusive and, and, and sensitive to, to those issues as well, whether it's someone's sexual preference, or whether it's their height, or the color of their hair, or the way they practice religion, or choose not to practice religion. You know, I think it's, I think a, a statement that only focuses on racism leaves us short. And if we're really gonna tackle this, then we really ought to tackle it. Um, you know, I would, I mean, I, I laud the idea of, of a group that, that's working to, to put something together. I think it's, I think it's very wise. I think the timing is, is certainly, you know, clearly maybe overdue, um, but I think to focus exclusively on race is a mistake.
Kathleen?
Thank you. Um, Paul, I would agree with you that the, that empathy, compassion, and kindness underlies all of the issues. Um, and in the last week, the, the number of stories that I've caught from people that I've heard with overt racist issues in our community makes me feel that we cannot be complacent and think this is a welcoming community, either one of them, fully. Uh, even the event that just happened, um, in the athletic meeting today is indicative of that, and that we cannot rest on thinking things are well. We really need to take a look at the underbelly. We really need to reach out to those outliers. Yes, we may not change them, Dan, but they need to be reached out. There needs to be a consistent effort to let them, uh, be softened in their humanity in terms of racism or any other type of discriminatory practices. Thank you.
So, go ahead, Joan.
Um, I agree with Paul. I think that, you know, the different discussions that we had about the holidays, uh, observances, that goes into the policy that we have on that. I think that just, um, having this just to racism, I think we have to encompass so many other different avenues. So I don't know how we could do that, what other words we could add. And I didn't know to Dan's, uh, point on the "create," and I think that we do, um, have, as Dan even said, is that we do have a good culture. Uh, you know, everybody's part of the school we have. Instead of saying "create," I'm just gonna throw out one word here that came up, is to "enhance," because I think when you say you enhance, you can always make better what we do, even as a human being. You can always do one step better. And I didn't know if, I'm not throwing, if we're, if we're going to wordsmith, that might be one word, and I don't know how Dan feels about the word "enhance" instead of "create."
That's, that, I would be fully supportive of that. I'm supportive of the concept for sure. Um, I think enhanced approach that we clearly already have is much stronger than "create," and I would agree with you, Joan.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Kathy, through the chair?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate the discussion that we're having, and I think it's really important. Um, thank you Superintendent Martino for, um, you know, saying that we have been having these really important conversations, um, and now it's sort of time to take it to the next level. Um, so sort of in regards to what we've been talking about, um, I find, I think that the word "create" belongs there because in, in the educational world, and I think Greg, you mentioned this at the regional meeting last week, uh, you know, our educational world, we're always striving for better, and we're always trying to do better as teachers, um, and there's always more that we can learn. And so whether that's creating new assignments for students, or creating different avenues for students to express themselves. So I personally do think that "create" works there, and I don't think it diminishes the fact that we have already done a lot as a community, because there's always gonna be some room to grow, and in that growth, there could be creation of other things we just haven't thought of yet that could help our entire community feel safe, um, feel welcomed, um, and feel part of this, this larger community.
So, could we say that we continue creating and maintaining? Would that be something that anybody would be okay with? I like that.
Creating is, to me, is better than "create," because it's at least demonstrating the fact that we have something, and for anyone to suggest that we have nothing, I don't think anyone on this committee would suggest we have nothing in this community. We are far from that. So I, I think that is better.
Is there a way to post the statement up so we can all see it?
I cannot, because I'm, I, uh, I'm not like a good Google person. Can, doesn't, Greg, do you have it?
Hang on one second.
Um, Kathy, could I, it's Couture. Can I just make a comment about, um, having the word "racism" in there?
Yep.
So I, I just wanna address that. I think when we were, um, discussing putting something forward for the committees to look at and affirm, you know, one of the, the strong motivating factors here is where we are as a nation and what's happening in our country, and, um, I, you know, the work that will take place, my understanding is that it will be more, um, it will be broader than, than just looking at, uh, races, you know, issues involving racism. Um, but at this moment in time, it seemed important to highlight that, because that's, you know, what we're hearing from certain voices in our community. Uh, it's what we're hearing, um, across the country, frankly, and, and it has a unique place in the scope of potential, um, issues discrimination and, and, um, you know, unwelcome behavior. And so that's why we chose to include it, um, specifically, but the work going forward will certainly be broader than just that one issue.
Kathy, if I may. Keith?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, kind of, um, going off of what Couture was saying, I think the second sentence is broader and goes on to discuss kind of broader, um, issues that will be looked at. And I think, second comment I have is that, you know, we could make a statement that, we could, you, we could come up with a statement that's, you know, five, 10, or 15 pages long. What matters is what we're gonna do about it. And I think the most important part of the motion that's on the table for consideration is the task force. And, um, obviously, in any agreement or contract, there's a trust that we have that that task force is going to go, bring us through a fruitful process that is, um, at, that covers all of the ground and scope that is, um, necessary and required, um, for our community to, to grow from this. So those are my comments.
Kathy?
Yep, hi Roger.
So, uh, just like to say, and a little bit of a, repeating what I said before, I don't think any of us believe this statement is perfect yet. I think that, and I, and even that our thinking on this isn't necessarily complete. And as both of the task force, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna find some things, learn some things, uh, wanna say some things a little bit differently. But I don't think it makes a lot of sense to try to go through amending a word here, a word there, and a word somewhere else, unless people think this is just a very bad statement. I think that it's, it's a good starting place. That's really what it's intended to be, and there's a lot of work ahead of this. So just my feelings on it.
Hey Roger, um, what if, what, I'll throw something out that I, that I think maybe could work, and let me know. Um, you know, responsibly of our schools to ensure that we continue to create and maintain a welcoming community free from racism and discrimination for all students.
I see. Can I speak? Kathy, is it okay?
Go ahead, Jessica.
Um, I, I'm not comfortable with that. I mean, when this statement came out, to be honest, I, I didn't think it went far enough, and, um, I think we need to recognize that many people in our towns don't feel a welcoming community free from racism. And I think the statement, I don't think we should say we're continuing to provide a community free from racism when many, you know, a good amount of people in our town, even if it was two people in our town, don't feel like we are accomplishing that. So, I mean, I, if I had had an input into this, I would have want this statement to go further, but, um, you know, as Roger just said, like, it's a starting point, and I'm okay with acknowledging that it's a starting point.
So my concern would be, if I could, this is Paul again, just, um, you know, back to, back to my first point. If this is gonna be some document, some statement that kickstarts a, a group, then, then let's, let's make sure that they understand that they're not just focused on just racism as a problem to be solved. I think, you know, to the point that, that, uh, someone just made to say, to change the wording to a community free from racism and all other forms of discrimination, you know, or, or some such verbiage, you know, and I'm, I mean, I haven't really spent a lot of time thinking about how the words with this, but, but it, but it can't be, I, I think, I think we should include it in their charter. And if there's gonna be the charter for some sort of a group, then, then let's, let's make sure that it's clear and that they don't waste time kind of wondering what their charter is. We want discrimination of all types eliminated from our environment, and we wanna keep it eliminated. I think we should say that.
Kathy?
Yep.
Kathleen. Kathleen Polatsko.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, so, so this sounds like a really great start, and it sounds like a great, um, statement for the time. And, and I think everybody would, would agree that we are having a moment in history that, um, I think the intent is to make sure that everybody realizes that we are, you know, we're on it. We get it. We're listening, and, and this is not the end. So I would suggest this is a good start, that, you know, we absolutely do need to make sure that we're a welcoming community for everybody, but we also need to make sure that we're sort of backing up the people that are in trouble now. And so let's start with this, and then the working group will obviously, you know, have all sorts of great conversations and lots of action items coming out of it. And, um, and just say, okay, it, it doesn't have to be perfect. We can actually amend it later.
Kathy, could I try to?
Yeah, Paul Desmond.
Yeah, I, I agree with all of that. I agree with what Roger said earlier. I mean, I think you have to read this in its totality. And, you know, and the word "create" doesn't bother me at all, because as Roger said, if there's one student out there who feels like, you know, it's not a welcoming community, then, then we need to create that for that student. And then in the second sentence, it, it does use the word "continuing to work." So, I mean, that gets across to me that we, we've at least tried. So I, I'm fine with, fine with it the way it is, and, and I agree. I think we take this as a starting point so that, for the discussions that need to fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so when we met, that was, that was what we were trying to get at, but also that Greg would, we would give Greg the authorization to form the working group so we can move forward with this. Because that's really, there are so many things that we can look at and try to change and make Southborough, Northborough, and the regional high school a better place for all students. And one of it was having Greg form that, um, the task force, and the other thing was, is that the task force would then, we would make it a priority to have it on, on our agenda items for the, for, you know, for however long we need to, and, um, you know, have the task force come and give us updates so we know that we're continuing the work.
Kathy?
Yes.
So, and just, uh, so just to kind of reply to Paul, um, I, I don't, the, the task force is not going to feel confined by the language in this, in this initial statements. And frankly, I don't think if we spent the rest of the night trying to add things and change things, we'd want task force to feel confined to whatever we ended up with either. So I think this, again, it's a starting point. I don't think we have to be worried that, uh, that the, um, that the plan, task force is gonna, is gonna move forward with, is gonna feel confined, uh, simply by, um, anything in this, in this particular opening statement.
So Kathy, to, to that end, why wouldn't this then be a statement? You know, because honestly, I'd love to see something unanimous, a unanimous vote on these things, and we may not be there, and why, why couldn't this be? There's already been a unanimous vote of the three chairs that have crafted it. Why wouldn't it be a statement from the three chairs? And then this committee then authorizes the kickoff of a, you know, of the working group.
So I think that we're the chairs of the committees though, so it would be, we thought, you know, as committees, we could put this forward. As, you know, as the 10 region, as the five Northborough, as a five Southborough, and the superintendent's union, that as we could, you know, put this out, you know, on behalf of all, we, we can't put it on behalf of all of our committees. And that's why we wanted to put it forward to you, so we could, we could be unite, we could be a united front on this and put this out.
But I prefer to be on record as supporting this frankly.
If, if I'm hearing correctly, this is, um, the charter is, it, it could, could be different than, than the statement. And if our intent is to, is to authorize the creation of a working group whose charter I trust we're all going to work on and come up with a, a charter for the group, um, that, that may be different and maybe more, uh, expansive or more inclusive than, than what some of us think, you know, this particular statement is. Again, why, why do we need a statement at this point? It could be a statement from the three chairs, but why do we need a statement if, uh, the charter is likely going to be different and, and the intent is to kick off a working group? Again, I, and maybe the votes are already there. I would, I would like to see something different than this, and I may be in the minority when it comes to time to vote, but I would love to see, you know, if, if part of this is, hey, we had the, the three chairs put out a statement. Excellent, and we had the entire committee agree to a, you know, to kick off a working group. Outstanding.
Kathy? Yes. Uh, Kathleen Polacko, so, so Dan, you know, you've been way more involved in, um, all sorts of government aspects than I have. But if the three chairs put out the statement, it's just the three chairs personally saying this is their statement. They're not speaking on behalf of the school committee, and they're not speaking on behalf of, of us as, you know, the people who are sort of guiding the administration. So, so I think it just loses any kind of, any kind of, of, you know, real momentum if it just comes from the chairs. It's just, then it's just three people.
Kathy?
Yes, Lauren.
Um, I agree with Kathleen, um, and I'm, I'm not going to mince my words. If, if we do not as a unified front support this statement, and I, I agree with Jessica, I really don't think it goes far enough, then I think that we're being cowardly. And I really, I, this, this is such an important topic. Racism right now is what we need to focus on. And, um, if, if we can't come to consensus that racism is important and that we need to continue the work in our school system, I guess I'm just sort of, um, lost for words.
So Lauren, so apparently those who are, uh, don't agree with you on the statement are, are cowards? Is that what you're saying to your other committee members? Where we're going with this?
No, and I, I, no, 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 and I don't want to.
So.
But I don't, I don't want to go down this rabbit hole tonight.
She did, she's, she used the word and called others cowards, because we're having this.
We have motions on the table, let's vote.
Yeah, if you're not for it, then, then, then vote in opposite.
This was just, we wanted to put this out as a unified, unified front, and we know that we'll go deeper into all different things. It's racism against everybody. So we can, you can use racism as a bigger word as well, not just towards one race. It's, you know, racist towards a lot of different groups. I think that this is a starting point. I think that the working group will do great work and really dive in deeper into what it, we would like to see going forward. And I think we thought it would be a great unified statement to put out and a starting point for us.
So why not say discrimination, Kathy, instead of racism? And then you cover all the bases. It's Pride Month, just as a reminder to all of the committee members. I mean, in the midst of Pride Month, we're talking about racism and ignoring, despite the fact that I've raised it three times now, you know, the, that, the LGBTQ community.
I'm with you Paul, I think we should add discrimination. I think we need to call out racism and add discrimination, and I would move to amend it, so.
Okay, so what do you want to, what would you like to amend it to?
I would like to amend it so it says, the first line says, "As we observe recent events in our nation unfold, we, the Northborough and Southborough Regional School Committees, recognize it as responsibility of our schools to ensure that we create and maintain a welcoming community free of racism and discrimination for all students."
I'm fine with that. Is that? Do I, do I have motions? I think we have to go back. I will amend my motion, uh, the second. Okay.
Uh, having moved for Northborough and the Union, I am in agreement with the amended language.
Okay. I'm in agreement for the, um, region as well.
Hi, it's Katara, I'll say the same for Southborough. Or I'll second Jessica's motion.
Okay, well, okay.
For Southborough.
Okay.
I'll agree with you second Kathy's.
Yes, Dan?
Nothing, I'm, I'm going to have a motion after that to change the word create to enhance.
Right, so wait, so Jessica and Katara. All right, so what, Dan, what is your motion?
To simply change the word, and I agree with the motion just made, but also to the word from create to enhance.
Kathy, point of order, do we have to vote first on the motions that are on the table? Or before creating more motions?
Yep. We should.
If, if I could jump in, if I could jump in, I think what we have here is, we have an initial motion. Um, I, I'm not 100% sure whether we've actually changed the initial motion, okay? Or whether we've simply amended the initial motion. And Dan is coming forth with an amend, with another amendment. So the, these can all be on the table at the same time, and they can just be voted on sequentially. Um, probably the last amendment voted on first, and then that's either going to pass or fail. Then the original amendment voted on next, that'll either pass or fail, and then the initial, um, the initial statement. I think that's the way it works.
That sounds sensible Roger. Uh, they're, they're basically tearing off of the original motion.
Okay, so Dan, what is your motion?
Change the word create to enhance.
Second for the region. Okay, so Dan, for create to enhance, okay? And I'll make that same motion for Northborough. All right, so it was Dan for region and Joan, and then Joan for Northborough. Anyone else? I need Southborough and the Union.
I think you need a second for North.
Oh, you second for Northborough.
If it, if it doesn't receive a second, then it dies in whatever committee didn't second it.
So then it just, all right, so then, do I just not do anything with it then? If no one else is going to do anything?
Well, I think the other committees, the committees that have seconded it need to vote on it, uh, because it's, it, it lives there. Doesn't have to be voted on by every committee. If it, if it, if it dies in the other committee, if it, if it gets voted down in the other committees, then we're still all on the same page.
Okay, so then, am I, so, all right, so, I'm sorry, like, there's just so many, like, things on the table right now. So do I start with the, the first statement and vote, and then with the next one, or do I go the amended?
No, right now Kathy, you want to take Dan's amendment, um, since it, it didn't pass, it didn't go beyond the region. I think Roger's saying that the region should vote on it so that we can settle that amendment before proceeding to the second to last amendment, which was the one about adding the word discrimination.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, point of order, so if, if Southborough doesn't second it, and we don't?
No, no one gave a motion for.
Pass? Say, I'm sorry?
No one gave a motion from Southborough or the Union.
Correct.
So if.
And it wasn't seconded for Northborough, sorry.
Okay, so that means this can't happen, right?
And, and any.
Everybody would have to agree?
Any committee, the, the, there are three separate committees, well, four, I guess, with the Union. Any committee can vote a language change. So if we want, if we want to end up with different statements, we can end up with different statements. We're separate committees. So this right now, this, this particular amendment that Dan has offered is really only going to be voted on by the Union and by the region.
Just the region.
Just the region.
Just the region.
Oh, just the region, I'm sorry, just the region, this, just the region.
Basically, yes, so basically if the region passes this, we no longer have a combined statement.
That's correct.
And Kathy, point of order, I don't think the Union votes on something like this. The Union is just for the hiring of the superintendent. But we don't ever, Union never really took a vote on this if we, because the, every member on the Union serves on another committee. Right.
I think you're, yeah, I think you're right Joan.
All right, so we'll just do the three committees, so, so, Southborough, Northborough, Region. Okay, so for, so I'm going to put the statement forward saying, changing the word from create to enhance and adding racism and discrimination for all students.
Um, Kathy, you have to do just the word, um, enhance first, that was Dan's motion. And then the, the other part is a separate motion.
So I vote just enhance right now.
The region is voting, yeah.
The, the region needs to vote on the word enhance.
Dan's motion to amend the second, the, the, the discrimination wording by adding his change.
You broke up Paul, I, I, I couldn't hear you Paul, you broke up.
Sorry, I thought that Dan's motion was to, I guess, enhance, I hit this to use the, a phrase. The, my, uh, the, the, the middle motion to talk about a community free from racism and discrimination, and he wanted to change the word create to enhance on that, so.
That's right, so we have to vote on that first, but that's separate from your motion, Paul.
Your motion will be voted on, no, no, what, even if this is defeated.
Okay. All right, so are we ready to vote as a region, just the region? On changing create to enhance? So Kathy, just a question. No other committee has made the motion for this? So this would be something separate for the region, and it wouldn't be a combined? Yeah. Statement, okay. Okay, are you ready? Okay, so Lauren?
No.
Joan Frank? No. Karen Ayers? Karen? Did she hear me? Karen, you have to unmute. All right, I can't hear Karen. Um, Sean O'Shea?
No.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
No.
Paul Bucka? Paul Bucka? Where'd Paul go?
He was having audio problems.
I would, if, if, I keep cutting out here, if you say, to me, I'd say yes, Bucka, yes.
Okay, um, Kathleen Polacko?
No.
Kathleen Howland?
No.
Um, Kathy Key, no. Karen Ayers, I still have to hear from you.
She typed, she typed it, I don't know if that counts.
Or she?
It says I'm unmuted.
Oh, no, okay, I just heard you, okay. Okay, so that does not pass. So now, we go to the second amendment that Paul Bucka made, which was to chain, to add discrimination for all students. Right?
Technically made that, even, it was Paul's idea, but I think I technically made the.
Yes, she did, Jessica.
Okay.
But all of it goes to Paul for the idea.
Okay, so on the amended motion that, so for region, did somebody make the motion? Paul, did you?
No, Jessica did. He, he expanded, he supported it.
Okay.
Well, we, I think Kathy, we probably did it incorrectly, so I would say so moved for Northborough, um, since this is an amendment to the original language.
So Keith for Northborough?
Second.
Joan seconds for Northborough, Southborough is Jessica and Katara, correct? Yes. And then region was? I'll make.
I'll move it, no one else did.
Okay, so Paul moved it and I'll second it. Okay, so this is a roll call for every, for, so I'm going to start with, um, Northborough, Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Kelly Gannett?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes, oops, I'm not in Northborough, never mind.
No, I was, oh, so sorry, so now I'm making it for Southborough, Roger?
Yes.
Katara? Yes. Um, Camille?
Um, it's Kamali, and.
I'm sorry.
No problem, um, yes.
Um, Jen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Uh, Regent, Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Kathleen Polacko?
Yes.
And Kathy Key, yes. So now do I have to make another hole? Do I do this again?
We just, yeah, we do, we need to vote on the original motion.
We do.
I thought that was amended though, to you.
It's just, we just voted on the amendment itself.
Kathy, I think you left me out, this is Kathleen Howland on that last vote.
I'm sorry, Kathleen Howland.
Yes. No worries.
All right.
Make sure I'm doing my job.
All right, so now I'm going to, now we're going to vote as, we're going to vote this as, um, three, that we'll make the statement as three committees.
Do you mind if we just reiterate what that motion is at this point Kathy?
Do you want, do you want to do it?
I can, I.
You're muted Keith.
So, sorry, yeah, I can do that, I just want to make sure I insert discrimination in the right spot. So can you just remind me where that is, and I'll get it noted here on my, on, on what I'm reading?
So it goes free from racism and discrimination for all students.
So it's really the words and discrimination that get inserted, uh, between racism and for?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to, i- if nothing else, just for clarity for all, um, I will just repeat what my original motion was with the amendment that was just voted. Um, so, and I'm doing so on behalf of the Northborough School Committee. Um, I move to accept the aforementioned statement on justice and equality as amended and as read into record this evening to authorize superintendent to form a task force to investigate this matter and make recommendations accordingly.
Second for Northborough.
All right, so Keith made the motion, second for Northborough, Southborough?
So moved for Southborough, it's Katara.
All right, so Katara made the motion for Southborough.
So moved for the region.
Joan made it for the region, I need a second for Southborough.
Second for Southborough, Jen.
Jen, okay?
Second for Regent.
Um, and Sean, second for Regent. Okay, this is enough, are you guys ready? So Northborough, Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Uh, Lauren Bailey?
Yes.
Uh, Kelly Gannett?
Yes.
Uh, Joan Frank?
Yes.
Uh, Roger Challen?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
So I, I know, so, is it Camille, Cami, is it Camie, I'm so sorry, Camie, is it Camillee?
Kamali.
Kamali, sorry. Um, I'm like, complete, I'm not... This is already a long way.
Little flustered.
Kamali?
Yeah.
Jen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dan? What?
Yes, obviously with the reservations I noted, but still, yes.
Um, Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Kathleen Pletchko? Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Okay, Greg, so, um, why don't you, um, put something together in the next, you know, week or two? And let us know how you wanna move forward.
Yes, so I'll put together a communication, a draft communication to the committees outlining of the task force and the representation of the stakeholders. Um, and we'll communicate that to the community, communities in the next, um, few days or weeks.
Um, can I ask you a question? Um, this is Kamali speaking. Uh, when would you be releasing the statement? Or plan to target, by Friday or next week?
I mean, I think that we can put it out after tonight, right, can we? I don't know how that...
My, my suggestion is sooner than later, uh, it should not be, it should not be, um...
Oh, no, no, I think that we should do it, you know, if we can do it tomorrow, I could do it tomorrow.
I think it's out, no? We just made it out by being public, or?
I mean, we just, we just did this, but we can also put it out there tomorrow.
It'll be posted in sense.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So Kamali, were you asking about the release of the statement or the communication around the task force? So just seeking...
The statement, because the statement should go before the communication on the task force, because then you probably put a link and, uh, sign, you know, forms and such.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
Uh, I think maybe that, along with the statement, maybe just the plan for a task force might be good to mention, because, um, maybe people, if they only saw the statement, would think we're just putting out a statement and not taking any action.
And we can do, and so I'll, I'll work with Greg tomorrow on putting something together.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Jessica, and it's best, um, digested in context of what Greg stated at the beginning and what was discussed in the meeting.
So, so we can, so the chairs can work with him tomorrow on getting something drafted to put out.
Okay, thanks so much.
Um, okay, so our next agenda item is audience sharing.
It looks like, um, to the chair, we have, uh, Jessica Leventon, um, 13 Strawberry Hill Road, so I'm going to promote her, um, to panelist. Just give me one second, please.
So can I just say one thing about audience sharing?
Yeah, why don't, yes, before I promote, why don't you, yes?
Yeah, so on, so on the agenda, audience sharing, I'm just gonna read what is stated on our agenda. Um, audience sharing is not a forum for discussion or debate between citizens in the committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to spread, to express his or her opinion on issues in the school committee business. The committee will take the information shared under advisement and will not respond to citizens' questions or comments posed in the forum. And just to let people know, we cannot comment or take questions for, for items that are not on our agenda, but that we will take those comments and put them on future agendas.
Could you, could you also repeat for people who are just tuning in on how they need to do their address, so they can be...
Sure.
I can do that.
Sure, if, if, um, members of the audience would like to share, if they could just, um, submit their name and address in the Q and A, and then, um, that will be the cue for me to promote you, um, to the panelists and share your, and share during audience sharing.
Greg, while you're doing that, just, um, before that was stated, it looks like there is one that was put in the chat instead of the Q and A.
Is Meredith Kent?
Yes, thank you.
So Jess, so the first is... So Jessica, are you with us?
I'm muted.
Thank you for your patience.
I zoom all day, but it's always a trick whether I'll be, uh, muted or not. Um, alright, great, um, so thank you for this time tonight, I appreciate it. I'm going to read a letter that has been born out of a newly forming group here specifically, and mostly in Southborough. Um, the name right now is the Anti-Racist Education Group of Southborough. I also wanna say that I'm very excited to hear about plans for a task force. Uh, some of the members have shared the letter that I'm going to read, allowing other town and district members to also sign this, I sent this out by email this afternoon, I believe around 4:30. We are looking to not only formally establish the group and invite others to attend, but we would also like to share this letter wildly, widely, and follow up to this meeting this evening. Um, first, I wanna say that I love this community that welcomed my family exactly a year ago this week. Um, more importantly, I need to be clear that I'm not speaking for or over Black voices. I'm here to use my voice and my privilege to amplify voices in an effort to dismantle racism. And Roxanne Gay's Marie Claire article on Making Black Lives Matter, she states, "Black people do not need allies, we need people to stand up and take on the problems borne of oppression as their own without remove or distance. We need people to do this even if they cannot fully understand what it's like to be oppressed for their race or ethnicity, gender, sexuality, ability, class, religion, or other marker of identity. We need people to use common sense to figure out how to participate in social justice." So while I cannot fully understand that experience, I understand that they carry the weight of racism and prejudice every single day, and I hope that we are all here to help carry that weight as active allies seeking change. The letter begins, um, now, "Major protests and vigils, including our own vigil at St. Marks and Southborough, have been taking place in the wake of countless murders of Black Americans at the hands of police, including Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, Tony McDade, Sandra Bland, Michelle Cusso, and most recently, Rashard Brooks. The anger, trauma, and despair that we are bearing witness to is palpable. In these moments, we subconsciously look to distance ourselves from these acts, resting on the laurels of our own progressive community politics or even our physical distance from these acts. However, as our neighbors, Lizzie Narcisse and David Joyner and our Senator James B. Eldridge illustrated during the Candlelight Vigil for Peace and Racial Justice on June 14th, St., at St. Marks, racism and microaggressions are alive and well in Southborough and the Commonwealth, including in police departments in Massachusetts. Algonquin Regional High School graduate and self-described white-passing biracial daughter of a Haitian immigrant, Lizzie Narcisse, shared the struggles of growing up biracial in Southborough and seeing cultural appropriation firsthand with her peers. She called us to action while powerfully reminding us that we, as a nation, undervalue Black lives." David Joyner shared stories of his daughters voicing their struggles growing up here as biracial in our predominantly white town, as well as very specific examples of a microaggression, microaggression during which a Cub Scout and his mother knocked on David's door, and upon seeing a Black man standing in the doorway, the mother stopped her son from giving his sales pitch and instead inquired as to whether David lived at his home. In follow-up to the incident, David's wife went so far as to poll neighbors to see if they too had had similar experiences, and they had not. As he reminded us, we are responsible for the messages we send out and the shadows we cast. During the vigil, Senator Eldridge recounted the Boston Police Department's Field Interrogation and Observation Program, which includes but is not limited to police actions known elsewhere, stop and frisk, as resulted in Black residents accounting for 70% of people stopped by Boston police officers, even though they compromise less than one quarter of the city's population. Further, as the recent news has uncovered, one of the officers involved in the Rashard Brooks killing is Devin Brosnan, a graduate of Algonquin Regional High School and a former resident of Southborough. In We Grew Up with an Officer Involved in Rashard Brooks's Murder, we're not surprised, Emily and Caroline Joyner not only shared their lack of surprise about the involvement of a former peer, their article echoed Lizzie Narcisse's sentiment with countless struggles of growing up biracial in a predominantly white affluent town. The Joyner specifically pointed to the school system's active erasure of Black, Indigenous, and other people of color. They cite specific examples such as the continued celebration of Colonial Day while donning white colonial garb, Algonquin Regional High School's continued use of the tomahawk as its mascot perpetuating negative and hurtful stereotypes of Indigenous people, and the all-too-typical presentation of the white palatable version of docile and peaceful Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Continuing with the theme of erasure, the Joyner sisters pointed out that they never learned about the history of the Algonquin people, yet we were encouraged in the name of school spirit to wear inappropriate war paint and headdresses and repeat demeaning racist chants. These events and firsthand experiences further illustrate that this is not a them problem, this is an us problem. It requires all of us to practice active anti-racism, because it is not enough to condemn racism, we must actively dismantle it. It is incumbent upon us as concerned parents, alumni, and citizens of the Northborough, Southborough School Districts to take this time to not only to listen to Black voices, but also to reflect on how we can forcefully address systemic racism in and beyond our own community. As Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The ultimate measure of a person is not where one stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where one stands in times of challenge and controversy." As an immediate first step, we have identified the public schools of Northborough and Southborough as an institution where we can make that change. The mission of the public schools of Northborough and Southborough states that it is to provide an exceptional educational experience for every student in a safe environment. We ask ourselves and you, how are we providing an exceptional and safe experience for our Black students and their peers if we are not actively honoring Black lives in our PK through 12 curricula? We need to teach our children how to frame our nation's history, to address white privilege, inherent bias, and the act of unlearning racism, to teach our students how to be effective allies, and to overhaul our hiring practices to diversify the predominantly white staff so that our students see themselves represented in the teachers who guide them. Our own mission statement emphasizes the immediate need for the public schools of Northborough and Southborough to prioritize anti-racist education and eradicate what is a primarily white Eurocentric perspective. By enacting these changes, we will empower our students and ourselves to be prepared to act against systemic racism both in and outside of our community. Thus, we propose the following action items for the administration and staff of the public schools of Northborough and Southborough. Number one, a third-party holistic review of the public schools of Northborough and Southborough curricula, hiring processes, and administration to address areas for improvement in equity, inclusion, and diversity. Training on implicit bias, equity, and inclusion for all public schools of Northborough and Southborough staff, including but not limited to teachers and administration. Adoption of World of Difference Program in the middle and high schools. Through this program, students will be trained by the Anti-Defamation League to be peer leaders and to facilitate conversations with other students in our schools. Research, review, and incorporation of facing history, facing ourselves, resources to address racism, antisemitism, and prejudice, thereby allowing students to connect choices made in the past to those they will confront in their own lives. Integration of content, including articles, books, documentaries, videos, and podcasts, centered on anti-racism, racial justice, and intersectionality into both academic syllabi and reading lists. Excellent and age-appropriate examples of these materials are available for all grade levels. Field trips to local museums and sites, including but not limited to the Black Heritage Trail, the Museum of African-American History, Arts for Humanity, the Metavoe Warwick Fuller Collection at the Danforth Museum in Framingham for students, uh, students of public schools of Northborough and Southborough. Presentations by speakers of color on topics of Black Lives Matter, racial justice, intersectionality, and white privilege to the public schools of Northborough and Southborough staff and student body. Recognition and celebration of Juneteenth within the PK through 12 curricula and through a scheduled day off. Through these actions, we hope to not only educate our community about the widespread, widespread impact of racism in American society, but to actively make anti-racist challenge, changes. As Angela Davis outlined in a recent interview, "This work will allow us to envision a possibility of a society that is free of racism and sexism and homophobia and transphobia." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jessica, very much for sharing that letter. You're welcome. I think that Greg's hoping to use, um, the working group that we just, um, asked him to form to go, um, basically through your, all the different, um, aspects that you outlined, your one through eight aspects that you outlined in your, um, in your letter. Greg, do you have anything else, do you?
No, I think I did receive the letter, um, late this afternoon, and I appreciate the advocacy and the work and the time that was spent, um, thinking deeply about this and look forward to, again, launching that task force and looking at, um, actions that we can take.
Me too, thank you.
So Jessica, I'm going to exit you back to an attendee.
Thank you, Jessica, very much.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me one minute.
Still ever so much easier in person, huh, Mr. Martino?
Yes, I long the days for in-person meetings. So we, um, we have Meredith Kent, um, 3 Chesterfield Road, who I will promote as a panelist.
Meredith?
And just hang on one, one second.
Okay.
There we go, can you hear me okay now?
Hi, Meredith, yes.
Hi there.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the time. Um, my comment actually relates, without knowing, um, to the presenter that was just before me, um, but with a narrower focus, um, at the moment. I'm bringing it up with the hopes that the committees will recognize the immediate opportunity that we have to do more right now to fight against systemic racism and social injustice. Um, in light of the recent events happening in our world and community, the Black Lives Matter protests locally and across the country, along with the article that was recently posted by two alumni of Algonquin Regional High School, which I hope everyone on the committee, if you haven't had a chance to read, um, does read it after the meeting tonight. I find myself concerned and disappointed that the Algonquin Regional High School summer reading list did not include any books focusing specifically on systemic racism. I, along with other parents and students, have expressed our concern to the school librarian and to administrators as well, and fully understand that the list was generated prior to many of the current events, and that a lot of effort and collaboration went into the creation of this list. I also know that there are likely many conversations that are happening that I don't know about. However, I know I'm not alone when I say that I feel our high school has an amazing opportunity, and quite frankly, an obligation to address this issue within the high school community, and the summer reading list is an excellent way to do this. This is also a meaningful way that our district can demonstrate that diversity and inclusion are key priorities of the district. Melican Middle School released their summer reading list late last week, and in addition to asking students to read a one read, a one-school-one-read selection, they provided a number of resources and books on race, diversity... they provided a number of resources and books on race, diversity, and social injustice for students to explore. They seemed to act quickly to add in these additional readings, and I was surprised that the high school didn't respond similarly. While the issues of systemic racism and social injustice are certainly complex and potentially volatile, and I understand that there's a concern in having our students explore these issues potentially without much support in the summer months, we've asked our high school students to read selections about similarly complex and difficult issues in past summer reading lists. I would request that the school committee take this matter under consideration and recognize the timeliness of amending the Algonquin summer reading list and the opportunity that we have to expect our high school students to read additional literature that addresses the issues of systemic racism and social injustice. Thanks.
Thank you, Meredith. Greg, do you want to?
So, I just will comment there has been a shift from the English department creating the summer reading list to Kim Honey, the library media specialist. And really, the high school has had a lot of conversations around what is the purpose for summer reading? And really, you know, Kim Honey and I have had a number of conversations over the past days and weeks. And really, the purpose was really to create opportunities for students to engage in reading for the pleasure of reading and joy of reading. One of the conversations Kim and I had was really, one of the challenges the pandemic has posed is the conversations and the work that happens when we're together. And so I think there is work and growth in that area, and Kim Honey and I have had conversations around really looking forward and looking at, you know, what is the purpose of summer reading? And this year's the purpose of summer reading was really around, how can we get kids to really engage in love in reading? Whether it's a graphic novel, whether it's, you know, something that they enjoy, and that was a real purpose. And that was a shift, and we'll be revisiting that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith.
So, Meredith, I'm going to move you back to an attendee. So, thank you. So, next we have Michelle Brownlee, one eighty Farm Road, Marlboro, Mass. Parent of an AHS student, so... Hang on one second, Michelle.
Hi. Sorry, I was on mute, and I think my video isn't on either.
How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Thanks. Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say I want to express support for the sentiments that have been expressed by the audience sharers so far. I think it's fantastic that the Black Lives Matter movement has sort of become more mainstream, something that's been a passion of mine for a long time. But very happy to hear everybody behind it and to know that the district is focused on that and trying to make a better experience for our students and the community in general. The main reason I came tonight, though, was not about that, was just to express my support for the work that the later Start Time Task Force has done over the last year or so with Greg's fantastic leadership. He's going to be presenting to you tonight the findings of the task force and the recommendations for moving forward. But I just want to commend all the members of the task force, and Greg in particular, for persevering and especially in light of changed priorities with everything that's been going on. But, you know, he stayed focused and kept us on task and led the way to what I hope is going to be a great solution for our students and putting our district in the forefront where it should be in terms of providing a great experience for the students. So, thank you for all your work on that, Greg, and I look forward to seeing the recommendations later in the meeting.
Thank you, Michelle. We're actually really excited to hear it tonight. So, I appreciate the work that you did on the task force as well.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm going to put you back to an attendee. But thank you. And we have one more. Andrea, twelve Fiddleneck Lane, Southborough. Hang on one second, Andrea. And Andrea is also a member of Start Time Task Force.
Can you guys hear me?
Hi, Andrea.
Oh, great. Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to also echo the support for the anti-racism work that's getting started in the district. And as Mr. Martino said, to speak about support for the proposal that you'll hear later to adjust the start times of the district schools. So, I'm a parent of Southborough students, second and seventh grade, and an Algonquin student, tenth grade now. And I'm also a doctor and a public health researcher. So, playing that role primarily, I had the privilege to serve on the Start Time Task Force over the past year, and in particular, to be part of a small group that was charged with critically reviewing the data about the impact of sleep on student health. I'm sure the committees have had a chance to hear this, but I really just wanted to say that from the public health and scientific perspective, I think the data are really compelling about the impact of sleep on student health, particularly about the role of adolescent circadian rhythms and the really the sort of biological factors that make it difficult for adolescents to fall asleep early and then best to get enough sleep if they have to wake up early. But even more importantly, I think the data are really clear about the impact of longer sleep on many domains, including school performance, mental and physical health, reductions in substance use. And I know that many people have been worried about the logistics of a start time change with regard to sports and scheduling. So, I just wanted to also flag that there are really strong data in support of longer sleep in terms of improved athletic performance and recovery from concussion and other sports injuries. And so, just to echo Michelle's thoughts, I really wanted to say thank you to everyone. Appreciate the dedication of the district and these school committees to this effort. I know it's not easy, but I think we have found a way that would work, and I think this is really the right thing to do. I mentioned to the task force that I think we should really think about sleep as a public health imperative. And, you know, we regularly check the quality of water in our schools, and if we found it to be toxic, we would act quickly. And I hope we can do the same thing to address what I think is really another important health issue for our students. So, thanks very much for the opportunity to think about this.
Great. Thank you, Andrea. I just wish that this happened this year, so I could have had an extra hour's sleep. I'm done with high school now, so...
I'm sorry you missed it, but thanks for working on it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Andrea. And that, through the chair, I believe that is the last person for audience sharing.
So, let's go to our... So, thank you, everyone who came to our audience sharing. Our next is a reappointment of the school district physician.
So, I just want to take a minute and thank Dr. Safdar Medina for his work throughout this year. I think he took on the role of district physician. And I'm glad he didn't know what the year ahead would look like, because I'm not sure if he would have taken on the responsibility. But he has, through Triple E, through working with our schools around substance abuse and prevention, through being a resource and an advocate and expert in, through the pandemic, he has been an advocate for the schools. He has been an advocate for students. And I just want to publicly thank him for his dedication and work. I did have a conversation with Mary Ellen Dugan, the wellness coordinator, and the conversation was, what will we do if Dr. Medina does not want to continue in this role? But thankfully, we had a conference call with him, and he was excited to continue. So, Dr. Medina is in the audience, so I will promote him as a panelist. If anyone has any questions or if Dr. Medina wants to make a couple, any comments or comments. Just give me one second, please.
While Greg is doing that, I will just say that I worked with Dr. Medina pretty closely on the Start Time Task Force Committee. And aside from all of his qualifications, the thing that he brings most to the table is his unbelievable enthusiasm. And I've worked with other district doctors before, and they're fine. You know, they're happy to have the job, but Dr. Medina relishes it. So, we're very, very lucky to have him, and we're very, very lucky that he has decided to continue with us.
Through the chair, if I may. This is Keith.
Kathy's muted.
Oh.
All right, go ahead.
There's no pilot. I'd just like to point out that this is basically a public service because the compensation that, you know, we're able to offer for this is really does not at all reflect the amount of time and enthusiasm as just described by Kathleen. So, I just want to preemptively thank him for his service because that's what it is, is public service.
Is Safdar here yet?
Yes, so Dr. Medina is here.
Well, I just want to say that, I mean, I don't think we could ask for better administration in our school district that's dedicated to the welfare of our children. Everything from all the committees that are there to Greg Martino, to Mary Ellen Dugan, all the principals. So, I have enjoyed it, and we're ready for the challenge ahead.
Thank you, Safdar.
Thank you.
So, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for Northborough and the region to reappoint Dr. Saffdar Medina as the district school physician for the 2020-2021 school year, parentheses, July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, end of parentheses.
Okay, so Joan made the motion for region and for Northborough.
I'll second for region.
Paul Bucka, second for region.
Keith LaBelle, second for Northborough.
Keith for Northborough and then Southborough.
It's Katara. I'll make the motion for Southborough.
Andrea, have a second.
I'll second for Southborough.
Jessica?
Yes.
Okay, so Katara and Jessica for Southborough. Okay, so another roll call. So, for Northborough, Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Southborough, Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes. Kathleen Pulechko?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Absolutely, yes.
Karen? Lauren?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Did I say myself? I'll say yes. Sorry.
Yes.
All right, Safdar, you're stuck with us, and we're happy to have you. Okay, so our next is Action on Minutes. So, this is how, so we have to just, so the union, so if we look at the Action on Minutes, we're going to do one by itself, then B, C, and D together, E by itself, and F by itself. Okay? So, do I have a motion from somebody on the union for A?
This is Keith. I'll make the motion to approve the combined open meeting minutes of December 18, 2019.
Kelly Gannett will second it.
Okay, so then, this is just a vote for union for this because everyone else voted theirs in already for their meeting. So, Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, we can vote B, C, and D together. So, I just need a motion.
Madam Chairperson, I make a motion for Northborough and the region to accept the combined special open meeting minutes of April 28, 2020, the special open meeting minutes of April 29, 2020, and the special open meeting minutes for combined for May 5, 2020.
Do I have a typo? I see the 27th. Did that get changed to the 28th?
I'm sorry. I probably took the eight. I amend my motion to the April 27. Thank you, Roger.
Okay. I will second that motion. However, there are a couple typos I just wanted to point out. So, I want to do that before everyone read their motions.
Okay.
So, the April 27 meeting, I think it said that I left the meeting at nine, at 9:55. I did leave a little bit earlier. I left at 9:45. I don't know if that makes difference. And then the May 5 meeting, I was present. It said I was absent, but I was present until 9:50.
Okay.
So, I do second. Well, I don't know if Joan has to amend that.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. Yeah, I amend my motion to include those corrections.
Okay. So, Joan for the region in Northborough, and then Lauren for the region. Seconded. Do I have something for Northborough?
I'll also...
You said that for, oh, Lauren did. Okay, sorry, Lauren.
I also move for the union. Is that required for this? It's on the list here for vote.
I think so, yeah. So, Keith for the union.
Kelly Gannett, second for the union.
Kelly for the union, and then I need Southborough.
It's Katara. I'll move for Southborough.
I'll second for Southborough. Jen?
Jen, thank you. Okay, so I'll start with Northborough. Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Southborough, Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Region, Kathy Key, yes. Kathleen? Howland? Harrigan? Pulechko?
Yes.
Paul Desmond? Karen? Lauren? Oh, abstain, okay. So, Karen abstain. Lauren?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Jan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Union, Keith?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Okay, so now I need E. A motion for action, for the action of combined policy development subcommittee meeting of September 17, 2019.
So, move for Northborough and the region.
Okay, Joan for Northborough and the region.
I'll second for Northborough and the region.
Thank you, Lauren. You're making it easier. And Southborough?
So, move for Southborough. It's Katara.
And I see a second.
I'll second for Southborough. Jessica?
Okay.
Keith LaBelle, I move for the union.
So, you don't have to do this one?
Oh, it was on there. Okay.
Nope.
My bad. My bad.
So, Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes. Kathleen Pulechko?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Karen? Lauren?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen? Howland?
Yes.
Jan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean? Sean?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion for the actions on retain combined executive session minutes of July 28th, 2018, August 27th, and May 9th, 2019.
Another typo, is that the 26th instead of the 28th?
Oh, sorry, it's the 26th, yeah.
I would still move for the region.
It's small, I'm sorry. All right, so Paul Bucka for the region.
Bucka for the region, Paul Desmond.
Keith LaBelle move for Northborough, the union.
Second for Northborough.
All right, Joan, again, Keith, wait, Keith for the union, okay?
Kelly Gannett, second for the union.
Okay.
Roger for Southborough.
I'll second for Southborough.
Katara?
All right, so Northborough, Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Southborough, Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Kathy Key, yes, Kathleen Pulechko?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Karen?
Lauren? Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Union, Keith?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Okay. Whew, we're getting there.
Motion passes.
All passes, so our next is the approval of the Northborough Reading Transportation School Bus Transportation Contracts. And just to let you guys know, when we do this vote, Northborough will do it on by themselves.
This is the region, I would move that we approve the school transportation agreement with North Reading Transportation, Inc., for regular day extracurricular and athletic transportation. This three-year term begins July 1, 2020, June 30, 2023, with the option of extending the contract for July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, and July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025.
I'm so happy we're not going to read the contract into the record.
Especially on Paul's connection. All right, can we get a verbal from you that the times that you cut out, you are reading directly from the language of the motion?
Directly from the language, yes.
Fair enough.
So do I have a second for region, second? All right, so Joan, so then, all right, so Keith and Roger, you have to do your own and then we'll go, we'll have the discussion for this.
Do our own, you mean? Most, are you referring to motions or?
You have to ask your own committee.
Yeah.
Okay, so I I as I'll entertain the motion from the Northborough School Committee for this, for the contract.
Can I say so moved for the motion or do I have to read the whole thing again, Kathy?
No, you can say so moved.
So moved, Kelly for Northborough.
Second.
I'll entertain a motion from Southborough to so move this.
So moved, it's Katara, okay, so Greg?
Is there a second, Southborough?
Yeah, Katara. So where's Greg?
I'm right here.
Hold on while I promote him.
Okay, so you're all set, go ahead.
I'll need a second from Southborough.
Oh, yeah, I I need the motion, no, I I need the motion, we need a second.
I I think, right, you're right, I think you said, yeah, you said second, you're right, you're right.
Second.
Okay, Kamali's in.
Kamali, okay. Okay, go ahead, Greg.
So just, so as the committee is aware, our five-year transportation contract expires June 30th of this year. Early in in the fall, I think we began looking in August at transportation bids and contracts and making sure we write a transportation, you know, request for proposal that meets all the requirements, increases the level of service for our community and our students. And through the great work of Becky Pellegrino and Keith LaVoye, we had a request for proposal, we received two bids. Both of those bidders met our requirements and criteria, because it was a closed bid, the it was the lowest bidder would be awarded the bid process, so I'll turn it over to Becky, who can share some of the the highlights.
So as Greg mentioned, we did have two contractors who bid for the our transportation contract. What we had decided to do was to put out for our regular transportation and then also include language in that document for our extracurricular and our athletic, so it would be one combined contract versus the two that we had previously. We also worked closely to make sure that some of the concerns of the families that we've heard over the past few years were incorporated into this bid and also some of the items on the wish list of our administrators, so we will be, hopefully, not hopefully, we will be piloting a like an app for families so that they will be able to see their students on the bus and we'll be working with NRT on that. And we will also have cameras on all of our buses as well, and so that is something new. NRT was the lowest bidder, and as you can see from the contract, they came in just under the the $2 million mark for the entire district for all three districts.
And Rebecca, you mentioned that you incorporated language from the community or a question from the community, was that done just verbally or in writing?
So Kamali, I can comment, so one of the the work that the task force, the Star Time Later Task Force, was take that input and feedback and make sure it was incorporated into the contracts. So some of the work was done through the task force, and we also had a transportation parent advisory group that actually helped seek input from families and citizens, and we've incorporated that as well through that parent, the parent transportation advisory committee.
Okay.
And I'll just also add, there are service level agreements in the contract as well, so that if if service levels are not met, that there are some consequences to NRT, and we felt that was important as a way to make sure that if they were not meeting expectations, that there was some type of consequence, and so that is new to the contract as well.
Thanks for that.
And just one other point, also, NRT was about $400,000 lower than the the second bidder that did submit a bid to the district.
And I guess the last piece of information I would add is, you know, again, the great work of Keith LaVoye and Rebecca in the Star Time Task Force, also worked closely with NRT to make sure there was language around if there was a shift in start time, that NRT would be part of the solution for that, so that is in the contract as well, and if we move forward with that that change.
I have a question, if I may?
Yep, go ahead.
Some of the issues that we had back in the fall, which seems like a distant past now, for sure, physically busing students into school, but I know there were a lot of growing pains in the fall, and I think they started to settle before we all shut everything down, but was any consideration given to making sure that those issues are, we keep ahead of those issues as far as, I believe we had some late buses and some route issues and some pickup issues? Are those pretty well understood and accounted for as far as preventing that? Should we be able to physically reopen all all the buildings at some point?
So just make a make a general comment and then turn it over to Keith LaVoye, but part of the work around thinking about what our district needs in terms of capacity at the central office level, the the routing was previously done from a person who received a small stipend to do that routing work. Part of the restructuring and making sure we have capacity to do this well is hiring a transportation administrator and registrar administrator. So that person's Gene Pinto, as I shared with the committee, a previous meeting has done outstanding work and is really taking the time and has the capacity to do the work well, and I'll I'll let Keith speak to some of the work that he's been leading.
And just to add a couple of points to that, Gene has been diving into that work since she started the position and really looking at whether they were problematic buses, buses that were late, not arriving on time, particular routes that were entangled with other routes and not making a lot of sense, not logically laid out, are all things that Gene has been diving into. We've also asked for the community to respond to a bus registration requirement and having families, and there's no financial obligation to this at all, but just registering for the bus and telling us if they are going to be using the bus at any point, which has allowed us to really consolidate our routes to a degree. We kind of look forward to getting back to normal for a variety of reasons, but one is to exercise some of the route changes that Gene is proposing. The good piece is also what she's doing is we're really connecting with NRT and with the bus drivers, the administrative assistants and the school admin to make sure that whatever changes we do make are going to be effective. I do plan when able to ride around with Gene and check these routes out firsthand to make sure that they make sense. We we can't do that quite yet, but that is going to be part of our summer plan, so we are looking forward to it, you know, and we hope that the adjustments that are made will offset a lot of those troubles we had throughout the last couple of years, and it also will launch us well into the adjusted start time as well, so one will feed the other.
Thank you, and what about flexibility, if so required, for some type of hybrid model or, you know, running certain routes certain days, I don't know, is that?
Great question, I just, before I answer that question, I just also want to comment that Gene Pinto is responsible for routing all of the lunch deliveries during the closure, so she has, she's been instrumental in that, as well as the diploma distribution, you know, work at the high school, so she's, you know, she's definitely has a lot of experience and has done that well. In terms of reopening in the fall and transportation, the president of the company, NRT, sits on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education reopening advisory panel, so he has a direct voice and is part of making those guidelines and requirements. We're waiting for those guidelines and requirements. From all indications, the governor, I believe, will make some type of announcement about reopening in the fall tomorrow, and specific guidelines in terms of capacity and transportation will be released, most likely, the second or the first or second week in July. And once we receive those, we'll we'll do some more planning around what it will take to get our students to school.
Can I ask Keith a question? Keith, this is Kathy, so if somebody, so if you register not to have, that your child's not going to take the bus, but ends up having to either take the bus or take the bus home, will that be an issue for families?
It won't at all, we will absolutely make that adjustment, we're going to have a method of for families to connect with with Gene directly to make sure that the child is routed, and every student is still in the system. They are all, you know, for lack of a better word, kind of hidden and can be easily brought back and put onto a route without without much difficulty at all. It is not going to take that long in order for that to happen, and we, Gene and I are working on a system where that turnaround is going to be less than 24 hours.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so does anybody have any other questions?
This is Karen Ayers, I just want to say, it sounds like you've done tremendous work in this area, and I think it's great because I know it's kind of been a thorn in some people's side for the last couple of years, both parents and administration, and hearing all of this is wonderful, and so I I just think it's great, thank you. I'm hoping kids can get back to school as well.
That'd be nice.
I think everyone's like crossing their fingers for that. Having kids in college, I'm crossing my fingers. Okay, so Greg, can I vote everyone or does everyone have to do it separately? How does that work?
Well, there's three separate contracts, so.
So then I'll just, I'll call Northborough, Keith, you can do, when it comes to it, you can do yours, and then Roger, you can do yours. Does that sound okay?
Sure. So just to recap, we have a motion to approve the school transportation agreement with North Reading Transportation Incorporated for regular day extracurricular and athletic transportation with a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2023, with the option of extending the contract for July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024, and July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. Is there any further discussion from the Northborough Committee? Hearing none, I will do a roll call vote, Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
And myself, Keith LaBelle, yes, motion passes unanimously.
Go ahead, Roger.
So for Southborough, we have on the floor the motion that Keith just read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? I'm sorry. Hearing none, let me do a roll call vote. Jess?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it passes.
And so I too go with the motion that Keith stated, does anyone on region have anything? If not, let's do a roll call, so Kathy Key, yes, Kathleen Pulechko?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
And Dan Kalenda had to sign off for some family stuff, so he he left our meeting at 7:50. Okay, so our next agenda item is start time.
Give me one second, please. So I'm excited to, this evening, to share with the committees the work, the great work of the Star Time Task Force and review proposal for the committees to consider. And I just want to acknowledge that the power of a task force to do great things, and we had a large task force with different subcommittees and working groups, and the work was very impressive and very thorough, and each of the members was very committed to moving this forward. So I just, on behalf of the district and the committees, just want to thank each each person for their participation in in developing this proposal this evening. And as you can see, it was a large group, so the why, so as Andrea stated in audience sharing, the why is very important. You know, why is a later start time important for teenagers, and really, when we think about our goal is to make sure that we promote the wellness, health and wellness of our students. That is primary to the work that we do, so sleep is has a direct impact on better academic performance, fewer car accidents, fewer sports injuries, faster healing after concussions, and reduce reduce rates of depression, anxiety, drug and alcohol use. So the research is compelling around why sleep is so essential, and one of the reasons why we studied to move the start time later at Algonquin, and this has been not a single-year journey, but a multi-year journey, which began in the spring of 2014 and really was, again, the advocacy of families and parents in the community, really asking and charging the committees and the district to study this and to figure out a solution. So in the fall of 2014, an Algonquin Study Group formed, and you can see the process. When we spoke to districts who are successful in changing start time later to high school level, they shared that it is is a six to 10-year journey. We didn't believe them, we thought we could do it much faster, but six years later, here we are, feeling like we have a real good proposal, and I just want to acknowledge all those members who who stayed along the journey, it was long and arduous at times, but it was important work, and I also want to thank Kathleen Pulechko, she has, I think she was even pre-2014, so she's she's been a consistent member throughout the process, so we just want to acknowledge her her work in this. So the Star Time Task Force, so we really talked about what is our approach to moving this work forward this year? It really came up with a three-phase approach, it's really to educate, making sure that people knew the why, looking at our options, what are our options? What are our options? Trying to be fiscally responsible and making sure that the options that we move forward were not, were cost neutral if possible. We also wanted to make sure that we weren't disrupting all 10 start times across our district, that we wanted to make sure that we weren't solving a problem and creating other problems in, in other, other schools. So phase one was educate. Phase two is really identify options. And then phase three was really presenting the options to the community and getting feedback and thinking about, do we have a proposal to move forward? And at this time, I will turn it over to Keith to talk about the start time proposal as of May 30th, 2020.
Thanks, Greg. One of the things that we were committed to as part of the task force is getting the feedback from different groups. So after we were able to develop a proposal, we did share it with some focus groups, some smaller focus groups, administrators, the task force themselves and others, just to get initial feedback. One of the pieces we saw is that we wanted to get some more alignment between the districts, especially at the elementary schools, with the amount of time that the kids were in school. And that is why we put this proposal forward. A couple of things worth noting on the proposal as it was of May 30th is that the columns in green indicate the start and end times that we know, have known for many years. The proposed times in yellow were the adjusted times that we were proposing. One thing that's worth noting, if you look in the far right column, you'll see the column named tier. What that indicates is that those tiers are designed, and those will be the students that ride together. So for example, tier one for the 15 Southborough buses will include Trotter and Algonquin students riding together. Conversely, in Northborough, it will be Melikan and Algonquin students riding together as part of tier one. And then going down from there, it goes from a tier two. In Southborough, which is the remaining elementary schools, and then because of Northborough, due to its size, we had to keep a tier two and a tier three. In both towns, this is a reduction. The prior year, what, well, what we know in green was three tiers for Southborough and four tiers for Northborough. So through that consolidation is really what made the proposal viable. The other thing worth noting with the proposal in yellow was that no bus in either town would start their route or do a pickup prior to 7:00 a.m. And that was a real charge of the task force was to make sure that none of these buses were picking up students prior to 7:00 a.m. Clicking from 6:00 to 7:00 was certainly very important and was something that we were able to hold true through the proposal phase. So the two schools that were impacted the most significant from the proposal is the Neary Elementary School in Southborough and of course, Algonquin Regional High School. Neary broke off from its tier with Trotter and is now joined the elementary tier. Thus, they had to move their start time by 35 minutes in the morning and 35 minutes in the afternoon. Algonquin, as was a key element and a highlight of the task force, we were able to move the start time of Algonquin Regional High School to 8:00 a.m., which was definitely a priority of the task force. But these two schools had the most significant impact to their current schedule. And for the other schools, it was within, it was either the same or within 10 to 15 minutes, which is something that the administrators feel that we can make some small adjustments to schedule and make it work. So after the proposal was set out, we did survey both staff and parents, and Greg is going to comment on the outcomes of those surveys.
So I'll just give you a little bit of the two, the data sets from the two surveys. So obviously, the key stake, one of the key stakeholders are faculty and staff. So we did survey our faculty and staff. We had 245 respondents, and 31.4% were from Algonquin, and then the remaining respondents were dispersed across the other nine schools. So the first question we asked is how knowledgeable are you on sleep research and the impact of sleep on adolescents? And if we look at the purple, green, and orange, we had extremely quiet and somewhat knowledgeable. So a large set of, of the respondents felt like they knew why this was important, and that was nice to see. How engaged were people in terms of the district's work on examining a later start time at Algonquin Regional High School? And when we look at this question, it's really, you know, many people weren't engaged at the same level the task force was, for example, but, so we had 29% not engaged and directly in the work, but were participating in terms of keeping up to date and communications and so forth. The next slide is really, does the start time proposal effectively address the problem of providing Algonquin students with the opportunity to increase the amount of sleep they're getting? So we had extremely effective in the purple, quite effective in the green, and somewhat effectively in the orange. We had slightly effective and then not effective in the blue, which was 6.1%. So overall, I think from faculty and staff's perspective, it was an effective solution to be brought forth. This was one of the obstacles that we identified was childcare, making sure that we did not propose solutions that really impacted families, whether they're faculty and staff or families of Northborough and Southborough students. So this question was really around, you know, do you predict that you will experience challenges related to your, your family's childcare with a proposed start time? So we had a negative impact was 6.1%. And then we had slightly negative impact was 11.8. Then we had approximately 40% no impact from the proposed start time. A slight positive impact was 1.6, a positive impact 7.3. And then the last section of the pie chart was, I do not have any childcare responsibilities, therefore, not an impact at least on childcare. The next question I'll, I just want to review quickly in terms of the data is how well did the district communicate about the start time topic? So excessive communication. So some people thought we excessively communicated, which I'd rather be excessively communicate than undercommunicate. So I think that's negatively, enough communication was 88.6%. And then some, 8.6 thought there was limited communication, and, and then 1.6, not enough. And then the last question for faculty and staff, how supportive are you of the proposed start time? So if we look in the blue, it's, I'm supportive of the proposed start time changes, but the changes will negatively impact my school and family schedules. So even though it would impact a family negatively, they were willing for, to move forward with, with the proposal. That was a 4.9%. Extremely supportive was 27.8%. Quite supportive, 34.3%. Somewhat supportive, 20%. And then slightly was 6.9, and not at all supportive was 6.1%. So overall, we had a majority support, and some of the work at this proposal's move forward is really thinking about, for those who responded or those, those faculty and staff who are not slightly supportive, continue to, to understand why and how we can support whatever impact it might be with their family or their schedule and situation. So that was the faculty and staff survey results. And then I'll quickly dive into the parent survey. We had over 1,200 responses from, from parents, and I'll share some of the highlights of So in terms of role in the school district, parent and guardian, and we also tried to make sure that we shared the survey with community members and community organizations as well, understanding that organizations might be impacted by a start time change. So in terms of the families that responded to the survey, you know, we had significant 48.4% of those parents were Algonquin Regional High School parents. And then Trotter and Melikan, the middle schools, were the second greatest number in terms of the respondents to the survey. So how knowledgeable are you on sleep research and the impact of sleep on adolescents? So again, the same parallel questions that we asked faculty and staff. So 10.3, extremely knowledgeable. I would imagine many of those are on the task force. Quite knowledgeable was 29.4%. Somewhat knowledgeable was 42.6%. And slightly knowledgeable, 15, and not knowledgeable. And I, I think this is really strong data to support the work that the task force did this year in terms of educating and really trying to talk about the why. Why is this important to our community and our students and their overall health and So similar question, how engaged have you been in the district's work on examining later start time? And again, not everyone needs to be extremely engaged in the work, but they need to be informed. So we had 1.6% extremely engaged, and I would again imagine many of those, those 21 members are part of the task force. Quite engaged was 6.3%. Slightly engaged, 23, or somewhat engaged was 23, slightly was 29, and not engaged at all. So there's some interpretation here. When we looked at this, we really thought about what, what does engagement mean? Does it mean just not, not participating on the task force? So there was interpretation from this question. And when we looked at this question, we also wanted to look at the communication. So in terms of does the start time proposal effectively address the problem of providing Algonquin students with the opportunity to increase the amount of sleep they're getting? So extremely effective was 7.4%. Quite effective was 39.3. Somewhat was 35.1. 14% thought it was slightly effective, and 7.2% thought it was not effective at all. In terms of challenges with scheduling and childcare for the proposed start time, again, negative impact, we had 8.4% of families said it would have a negative impact. Slightly negative impact was 9.9%. So again, working, we'll need to do some work around how do we, how do we help families mitigate some of these impacts? No impact was 52.2% of the, of the respondents. This is interesting and surprising, so most of the families would not be impacted by the proposed start time. 4.9% thought there would be a slightly positive impact for their families, and 16.2% thought there was a positive impact. And the last 8.4% is they do, didn't really have any childcare responsibilities, and it wouldn't impact them. And then a similar parallel question, I won't review this data because it's very similar to the data I just reviewed, but how well did the district communicate about the start time topic? Again, so there, seven people thought there was excessive communication. Enough communication was 67.4%. Limited communication, 25.5%. And not enough, 6.6. So again, although it was not perfect, I think the work that the Start Time Task Force did in terms of trying to communicate this issue and this topic and the why behind it was fairly, fairly successful. And the last question really is how supportive are you of the proposed start times? So, so the blue is, I'm supportive of the proposed start time changes, but the changes will negatively impact my school, family and schedules. So we had approximately 4% of the respondents. So they knew the why, they knew it was a negative impact, but they're willing for the health and wellness of our students, which was great to see. 40% is extremely supportive. 29.4% was quite supportive. 11% was somewhat supportive. And then we had 7.3 slightly, and then 8.4% not at all supportive. And again, when we're talking about making significant changes, I think this data is pretty compelling in, in that for the, the respondents to this survey, there was strong support for, for the proposal. So I think, thought that was very important data for the committees to see in terms of what faculty and staff are thinking, as well as our, our families.
As part of those surveys, we did allow people to enter questions or concerns that they had. I did look through both sets, both from the faculty and the parents, and kind of narrowed it down. There were a variety of different questions, some we were able to answer in the previous slide, so hopefully those that had those questions are able to tune into this. But then there were certain categories that kind of jumped out and themes that came back. We wanted to make sure that we were responsive to that with our final recommendation. So to kind of pull those together, we have four bullets here. One is that in the original proposed time, a few of the elementary schools in Northborough's time was shortened by 10 minutes. That has been restored to the original times. Many felt that the eight o'clock start time was just not late enough, and that they would like to see something more like 8:30. Beware where we begin, but that just wasn't a feasible option for us to do with, with keeping our costs down. And also getting back to what Mr. LaBelle said earlier about the better routing, you know, will improve the overall consistency. So one thing I wanted to make known tonight is that the, the routing is, is going to improve for this year upcoming, and the start time is not going to really impact that. But we will have a year of working on the adjusted routes that Jean is currently working on, putting them into practice, and then adjusting them for the start time. So we're going to be taking a lot of steps towards improving the routing in the next year, so that it'll be ready for the start time adjustment. And then at the bottom, this also did not add any additional cost for the district. We were able to do it within the bus allotment that we already had, which was certainly something we wanted to keep in mind. It wasn't a overall driver. We wanted to make sure that we were still able to get the start time to where we want it and see how the cost panned out. But fortunately, we did not need the additional buses to make that happen. So that was a pretty exciting outcome of the proposal and the work that Jean and I And so here it is. This is the recommendation that we'd like to make for the start time adjustment. The things worth noting here is it, it does take Algonquin to 8:00 a.m. It does keep Neary at the 8:45 start, and it does align the Northborough Elementary Schools to what they were previously, which was certainly something we heard loud and clear from the original proposal. I did want to also note that the reason why we did survey on those adjusted times is that did come out of our focus group as, you know, wanting some parity between the amount of time that kids were in school. And the other part of it I would notice is there's no real reason why there's a discrepancy between the two towns and the amount of time that they're in their buildings. We tried to look back and do some research on that, but it has been kind of the prerogative of the different schools to make those types of adjustments. So there was really not an analysis of that until we dove into looking at these recommendations and proposals. But this is, this is the proposed start time schedule that we would like to, for your consideration tonight.
So next steps, you know, if, if approved, so again, there'd be no change in the start times until the fall of '21. So part of the work that the Start Time Task Force did was really talk about, we needed a year to plan and prepare and let families know so they can make adjustments over the course of the year. So this would be implemented in the fall of 2021. So next steps really Keith mentioned with Jean Pinto and Keith, really looking at routing, analysis and timing, and really making sure the quality of service of transportation is there for our students and our families. Adjustments to school schedules, so really looking, working with our leadership team and our principals and our faculty and staff around thinking about what, what impact would it have in terms of the overall schedules? And then again, next steps, really looking at the technology, cameras, improved GPS systems so that we have more accountability in terms of timing of buses and routes and so forth. And then lastly, the next step really is working with our community and our families and our faculty and staff around ongoing communication with, with updates and preparation for these changes, if voted this evening.
And there were certainly a lot of good questions that came from the survey, whether it be about after-school activities, mitigating any impact on athletics and music. These are things we will absolutely work with, with our staffs, but we're hopeful that this actually provides additional opportunities and doesn't, doesn't incur any restrictions that we'll be not able to overcome. So like Grace said, I think we had, we do have a lot of work ahead of us to, to make it happen, and I'm glad we have the year to work on that.
So as, as Keith mentioned this evening. So as, as Keith mentioned this evening, it is our recommendation to the school committees to implement the adjusted school start time proposal in the fall of 2021. Achieves a later start time at A R H S, which we've been working toward for six years. And again, you know, we talk about the health and wellness of our students. This is one, one factor of many that we have to look closely at to make sure that our students, again, are healthy and well. Has minimal impact to our remaining nine schools with exception, Neary does have a later start time. And we've done a lot of work, working with Neary faculty and staff and, and the principal on talking about this. It's really a, a cost neutral plan to implement. It does not increase any costs of our transportation services. And just lastly, we had tremendous support from the start time task force and their work, soliciting information, asking questions, getting out information. And I think we had a pretty good response rate in terms of the survey. And, and I feel like the survey data is, is pretty compelling. So that concludes the presentation and would open it up for any questions or clarification.
I have questions.
So I can't, I can't see everybody like all at once. So Jen, did you have a question?
I, I, yeah, I had just a quick comment. I was on the task force too, and I just wanted, I just wanted to say that, you know, there's incredible amount of work and brainstorming. And, you know, if I could have it my way, it would be 8:30 start time. But I think the fact that we were able to do this with no additional cost and learning about the complexity, complexities of our busing system. I think it's actually amazing that we came up with the, the, you know, and just so congratulations to all the people who are involved and on to some different areas of all the schools and parents and communities. It was really a wonderful effort. So I just wanted to, to speak in support of, of all the good work that's been done.
Kathy, Kelly, you know?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just have two questions. One about the Northborough, just a clarification about the Northborough Elementary Schools. So the original deduction of the 10 minutes, it was nothing to do with needing more time between the routes. It was just for more of, to equal the days. And then the second question was, was there exploration with traffic studies? And is this going to impact our traffic, the community traffic at all? I know that's been a complaint in some surrounding towns with adjusting start times is that it's impacted the traffic.
Greg, why don't I take the first one if you want to take the second one? The first one about the
Second one and you take
The first question, Kelly, I can, I can answer that. Out of the focus groups is where we kind of saw the differentiation because the recommendation that we're going with tonight is actually where it started. But people saw that there was a discrepancy and we did look into it. We couldn't really figure out a reason why. And then when we went, when Jean and I went back to analyze whether or not, you know, bringing them to more of an equal time would be feasible, we did discover that it was possible. So the proposal that we went out to survey on was something feasible and didn't have any impact on the routing. We were able to make it work with, with both scenarios without much difficulty. So it had nothing to do with the routing. It had everything to do with, you know, building some parity between the districts.
I think, can I just add to that Keith? So one of the charges was, we knew that there was a discrepancy between the towns. And one of the charges was if, if we have to reduce time to make it work, that it, that might be a trade off that we'd have to make. And we, you know, basically we looked at it and Keith and Jean again, said that it wasn't a trade off we had to make in order to make it happen in the Northborough community. In terms of traffic, so I've been traveling the roads for the past couple of months. There hasn't been a lot of traffic. I don't think it's going to be a problem.
You can only go with what you know, Greg. You, you know, we're not making up any traffic studies here. So, yeah.
I've never made it faster to work than I have in the So traffic is something that we will, we will monitor closely. We, we, our initial thoughts is that, you know, it's something that we've studied in the past years with the start time later groups. I mean, in fact, Kathleen Pelletko has followed buses, I don't know how many times. But we think that any of the traffic issues will be able to mitigate. And, and honestly, primarily the traffic issues that we see are the line coming into Algonquin with a number of cars that students are driving. So we're also exploring ideas of having satellite bus stops. So, so we're exploring that idea where, you know, maybe parents don't drive their students, their sons or daughters all the way to Algonquin. Maybe they drop them off at Trotter and from Trotter, there's a bus. So we're exploring other ideas to try to provide a better quality of service and also mitigate some of this traffic. But we don't think it's going to be an obstacle.
Would a traffic light help that if there was ever a traffic light there? Would that relieve any of it or no?
So I, so will, I'm not sure.
I don't drive over there, so I don't know the problems of the high school.
Kathleen Pelletko actually volunteered to do some detail in the middle of the road there at that intersection. But I didn't want to hold the tour tonight.
Yeah, the challenge with Algonquin is that we have a lot of student drivers and, and the, there's basically two entrances. So you have a lot of traffic coming together at the same time. So we will be studying traffic.
You could have two satellites, one in Honey Dip and one in Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, I don't think so. That's not going to be with the wellness committee. That's not
I'm just kidding. Anyways, does anybody have anything else?
Hi dude, this is Kathy, and I just want to say that this is phenomenal. Just quite honestly, as a parent, looking at the surveys and everything, and even through the past six years, I was kind of like, I don't know, I was kind of skeptical myself, like, I don't know how they can change that, that is, but this is incredible. And the, the fact that we can have no buses being, you know, deployed before 7:00 AM, I think is great. So I would just say kudos to everybody. And I, you know, I hope it all, you know, we don't have traffic and all that. My other, my question was, it looks like you have great, you know, faculty support. I know a lot of them are coaches. And if you've, if you've reached out to them as far, and maybe the mid walk league about, you know, games and competitions and things, and how maybe you anticipate that getting out at 2:30?
Kathy, do you want to take this?
We have looked into it and I think that's one of the things that, I mean, there was actually a sub-subcommittee that looked into athletics and all that. It, it's incredibly complex. This is, it's as complex as our busing system because we are in different leagues, given the sport and given the gender and all that other stuff. So I think that's going to be one of the things that we really have to work through this year in terms of the implementation of, you know, like, how do we, because I think other schools are also starting to, you know, really consider changing their start times. So that will all get worked out, but it, it has absolutely been analyzed.
So one of the question, Mike Masarino was a key player and, and he took a close look at this. And one of the questions is Mike, is will this work? And he analyzed it and he said, yes, it will work. So, you know, according to what it looks like on paper and the scheduling, he said that, that it should not be an issue. But again, to Kathleen's point, you know, we'll have to study it some more and make sure that we dot every i and cross every t.
Yeah, so I think for a lot of, a lot of like practices anyways, and just from my experience with my three kids, is that most practices don't start until 2:50 or 3:00 anyways. So they use that timeframe to, you know, be able to go see teachers or do their homework and stuff like that. I don't, you know, I know it's only going to be now maybe, you know, half an hour or so for them to do that. But as far as games go, I don't think it really, unless their game's far away, they didn't really have to leave that early.
Exactly. And now, you know, you're on the record, Mike said it will work. So, thank you.
Kathy, could I chime in here for a sec?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I likewise want to commend the committee. I think it's a great job on this. You know, a year or so ago, I thought sure we'd be going to town meeting at some point looking for 750,000 or a billion dollars or whatever. But I think it's remarkable that you came up with a, a no cost solution that, you know, maybe it's not perfect, but it's, it's very good. So I'm, I'm definitely supportive of this. I do just have one question on the Finn start time extending from 3:05 to 3:25. I remember being at a meeting years ago with Kathleen Pelletko, of course, where there was some data presented around, I think it was one community that had succeeded in, in starting those high school later by, by starting the grade schools earlier because I had research showing that, well, these kids peter out at like 1:30 or 2 o'clock anyway. That's the extent of my knowledge on that, but I, I just wonder if you, if you looked at that at all and, you know, what you, how you came to that conclusion that it was going to be okay.
I think that one of the many iterations of solutions was to look at, you know, basically swapping start, the earlier start time with elementary and having other schools start later. But we, it really became a safety issue with students, young students waiting for buses in the dark or, so that was one of the obstacles that we found with that approach. And we did have conversations with Clayton Ryan and Steve Mucci about a later start time. And, and they did not think that it would be impactful in terms of students learning at the end of the day. But that was anecdotal and we didn't do any research around, around that topic.
The other thing that was worth noting, we were looking at it, is that it, even though it is, it is a little later, it still falls within that sweet spot. We wouldn't want them to be any later than they are. So that's, you know, we want to make sure that Algonquin's adjusted. And actually, one of the pieces that came from this is we want Algonquin to see the adjustment, but the other schools are in pretty good shape. So how can you minimize that adjustment? And these are just some of the shifts that were required to make the routing work.
Yeah. And I, and I also think that the
Wait, Kathleen, keep it going.
Okay, that the research subcommittee that was part of the start time task force, they looked for research on young kids and them starting later, and there actually just isn't much. There is barely any. So there really wasn't anything to go on and there certainly wasn't anything negative. So.
Okay, who was just asking a question?
I was, this Kathleen. I was, I just think this is phenomenal. My first speaking up at a meeting after being elected, the thing I felt brave about was about sleep as a college professor, just seeing how decimated these generations are in the last 10 years for sleep. I just applaud you all. And I wanted to hear how the arts programming will be affected if at all, since we heard about sports.
So in terms of the arts program, one of, one of the challenges, and I think that the director of fine and performing arts talked about many of their, their lessons or instrumental work happens between when school gets out and between when sports starts. So that was an opportunity or a window of time for some of our musicians. So that is, that is something that we need to have conversations around how are we going to find that time for our students who need that type of time at the end of the day and in between athletics to, to make that happen. But in terms of overall impact of fine and performing arts, I would argue that, you know, academic achievement and, and being able to focus during the school day is, is a good trade off as well.
Kathy, I have a question. I'd also like to echo all the other previous members in their praise for this committee, especially for Kathleen, our school community member, for the diligence and the endurance to stay on this committee. I know when this was first proposed years ago, it was like, how, how can this ever happen? Without, as Paul said, a huge expense on having extra buses. And it was a lot of good work from all the people involved in the past and even going on to the new administration today. My question though is on, is on the, what you're showing on the screen, the school time recommendation. Melican looks like it's losing 10 minutes because it says the same start time, but they're getting out 10 minutes sooner. How is that taken into effect?
What we're working on for, for, for Melican is, and I've talked to Principal Carb about this, is really working on how, how kids are getting into school, how quickly we're going to be able to get kids off the bus and into classrooms and how maybe a homeroom adjustment might be, may be put in place to gain that. That and through looking at the start time and passing time and, and things of those natures, we're going to be able to capture that 10 minutes. I had this previous issue at Trotter a couple of years ago with about a 10 to 15 minute adjustment. And, and we were able to make it work through being creative with whether it be breaks throughout the day, homeroom, passing time, the amount of time that kids get between when that first bell rings and when homeroom begins. So this will be part of the work that Principal Carb and I and her team get into as we adapt. But we both feel that it won't be, have a significant impact on teaching and learning.
Okay, I was thinking that maybe it would be passing time?
Yeah, that's, that's a possible solution.
Okay. And good luck on getting the kids into the classrooms as soon as they get off the buses because that's a social age group and they'd love to be with their friends. So good luck on that one.
Absolutely. But I think we're also working on the arrival time of the buses so that we don't lose that because that is an important part of the way kids start their day and have that opportunity to decompress before they begin. So we want to make sure that it is still healthy. We don't want it to be a time where kids are feeling rushed or stressed in any additional way. We want to make sure that it is, still has that meaningful socialization while, you know, starting a reasonable time.
Yeah, great consideration for the kids too. Thank you.
Kathy, it's Katara. I have a question and a comment.
Yep, then.
Okay, so I, I do want to just take two seconds and echo everyone else's positive comments about this. I think it's wonderful to have a concrete plan at no cost. And I agree that it seemed like this was not going to be possible at a certain point in time. So this is, congratulations to everybody who worked on this. I have a question about Southborough Elementary end times. So since Neary, Woodward and Finn are all on, on tier two, I assume that means that the same buses are going to be picking up sequentially at those schools and, and doing sort of one big route with all of those schools. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so then if the Neary kids are getting out at three and Finn doesn't get out until 3:25, I, I'm just wondering what the analysis was for how long those kids will be spending on the bus. Because, and, and, and if this, if these times, because I, I understand why they're staggered, but if that's subject to adjustment later, it seems that things are moving more smoothly so that the kids, because right there, that's 25 minutes just sitting on the bus, waiting for everybody to be picked up before anybody's even, you know, on the way home.
Yeah, and that's where the creativity of the routing is going to occur, Katara, and where we might have to make some tweaks either one way or the other, five to 10 minutes to, to make it work well. We're just promising not to go any later. I think that's the biggest thing that we want to make sure we put out there is, is we don't want any of our elementary schools, you know, to be dismissed beyond 3:25, to make sure we minimize the amount of time that kids are on the bus. But, but going from the different tiers, you know, one of the things we did want to analyze is the amount of time that kids are on the bus. It is a slight increase, but it isn't as large as you might think. And it varies for every different bus. So we have looked at every route and, and they are all within reason of, of a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And just a general comment to Katara around, because we've collapsed the tiers when we had four tiers and, and maybe a bus was late at Algonquin, the, the late impact compounded over, over the tiers. So by the time the bus arrived at Finn, it was significantly late because of, again, the sheer number of tiers. So we're hoping also to reduce that impact. If, if a bus is slightly late with tier one, it's, it can make up the time for, through tier two.
Did you have something?
I was just thinking back on Joan's comment about the extra 10 minutes in that observation. Wasn't that 10 minutes part of what was added last year? And that came up in the conversation about the degradation of the music program. They were getting that extra time in there. Do I remember that correctly? And therefore, minimum, without this 10 minutes, it impacts the changes to that program.
Yeah, so I will, so Kathleen, one of the things we're looking at is there was a change in staffing to Melican last year, as you're aware of, we're looking to restore some of that reduction. And through FY21 budget, we will be adding back the time. So again, moving back to where we, where we left off. So that was one, one positive area in terms of moving forward. And which would, which would give us more flexibility in terms of the music program at Melican than we've had in the past.
I consider that champagne worthy. Thank you, Greg. You made my night.
Kathy, if I might, I'd also just like to acknowledge the efforts of the task force in what they've put together here. I've watched this over the last several years and to deal with all the moving parts that was involved in this. I've watched this over the last several years and to deal with all the moving parts that was involved in this, to come up with this plan was just extraordinary work.
Kathy, a comment?
Yep.
So as a member of the task force, I just, I guess, wanted the community to also know that we did have a conversation about, you know. Does it make sense to sort of like rip off the Band-Aid and and start in this coming fall with these new proposed start times? So that was a conversation we had and especially due to the pandemic. And also because, you know, this presentation is so late in the year, it's June. And so to have families sort of to figure out their new schedules come the fall, those were considerations that the task force made. Which is why the recommendation is to start in the fall of twenty twenty-one, so just wanted everyone to be aware.
That's a great point.
Kathy?
Yep.
I just went into the chat line and Paul Buck has said, my internet connection is horrible tonight. Kudos to the committee for a job well done, so I just wanted to add his comments.
Thanks, Joan.
Kathy Keith LaValle here, if I may.
Yep.
I kind of echo what Kathleen Howland was saying about the, well, it's been alluded to a few times. But little what's most squishy for me still with this is is the kind of clubs, extracurriculars, arts. So it's a bit unsettling to to hear that that's kind of like a work in progress. And it feels like there's not much guarantee there, because I think those those things are really critical to the high school experience. So I guess I'll reluctantly, you know, go on the word that, you know, on good faith that that's still going to be addressed and sorted out successfully. Because it it seems to be not very well addressed yet. So that's just a comment there. And then I would also urge the district's administration to consider a multi-pronged approach to complement this at some point. With sleep hygiene and and some work around, you know, what students have, what role they have in their own. You know, kind of wellness and with respect to sleep and sleep patterns and maybe some conversations around that and some education, I think, would help. Make this a more holistic and multi-pronged approach, like any kind of complex system and complex human behavior. I think there's, you know, more than one thing we can do to to overall improve the situation, so I just want to put that out there.
So Keith, I'll just comment on the clubs and activities. So so there is no plan on reducing the number of clubs and activities that happen at Algonquin because of this proposed schedule. The challenge really is that for those students who are doing multiple things, so there are multiple clubs and and playing sports. It's trying to balance all those pieces and making choices. So it's not as if that there aren't opportunities for students to engage in that work. It's that right now in the current schedule, there's there's some time before sports begin where they can do some other things. So that is something we're looking at. But again, the number of opportunities is not decreasing for clubs and activities. It's for those students who are doing multiple things that it might be a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, you speak to actually the heart of my, that's exactly my consideration, right? So are will there ultimately be a reduction in what students can do for those who do participate in multiple activities? So I was one of those students back in my day, running from music to soccer. And so that's exactly what I'm hoping to see addressed, because I think for for the subset of students who who do choose to, you know, who do arts and athletics. Or a club and something else, musical theater and whatever. I'd hate to see that ultimately become a reduced opportunity, because I think that would be a significant trade off for this.
And I think I also want to comment that whenever you're making a significant change, there there has to be, there typically is some trade off, right? So there's, you know, and really thinking about, okay, does the benefit outweigh some of those trade offs? You know, and again, I'm I'm confident that we'll be able to work through some of those challenges. And then to your other point, Keith, around taking a holistic approach, this is not, this is not the answer. This is not the only answer to students' stress levels. This is one small component of it. You know, I think when we surveyed students, they mentioned technology, homework, sleep. And then just the 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 number of clubs and activities and and classes that we're taking as their their factors for why they were so stressed. So this is one small piece that we need to do to look at a much more broader approach to making sure our students are are healthy, well and balanced.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a quick comment? I think this is awesome, I'd love to see this. And maybe on Keith's point, that at some point it gives the high school. That they can start working on different schedules for different, like just scheduling as far as kids go for extracurricular things too, possibly. So anyways.
I'm confident there's a solution.
Kathy, Joan Frank, I have a question.
Yep.
Greg, I know you did this survey responding, you know, people responded to the questions you gave them. Was there a section where parents could write in another concern they have that maybe there wasn't on the survey? And what I'm trying to gear that to is, were there any concerns from parents about the middle school, about Trotter kids? On the bus with high school kids and Melican Middle School with high school kids?
Yes, so there was an open response for parents to share any additional concerns that might not have been asked to the 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 direct questions. There there were several comments around, you know, a concern with high school and Trotter or middle school, middle school students riding the buses together. You know, but it wasn't pervasive in terms of it wasn't wasn't a tremendous theme that emerged. And in our focus groups, many of the parents that we've, you know, we sat down and talked with mentioned that as a concern. And it's something that we'll have to be proactive in terms of working with our students who ride the bus and making sure that everyone feels comfortable. And Keith, I know you have some experience at Trotter with a change similar to this, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, many, many years ago, Joan, we brought the Neary and Trotter students together. So we had a grade span of fourth grade through eighth grade together, and we had the same concerns that came up. And and one very basic thing we did is that we had the Neary students sit in front and the Trotter students sitting back. And just having that as a general frame and the bus drivers were able to work from it really helped set the stage well. We also had an opportunity for our students to become leaders in different ways. And yes, did we have problems along the way? Absolutely, and did we have to, you know, work when I was Trotter principal, work with Principal Valenti, you know, a number of times over issues? But we were going to be doing those types of things anyways, just in a different context. So I did, I was worried about it at first, I think like many are at this point. But it actually wound up being more of a better opportunity than 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 a lost opportunity.
Yeah, I think good communication with the parents, I mean, it's going to have to be every year. You know, it's going to be in the year twenty twenty-one, year twenty twenty-two, that has to be communicated to the parents so they're aware of it. I also taught in the school district where we had like upper elementary with kindergarten students. And we did the same, they did the same thing, they put one school in the front and one in back. And besides that, you know, on seating in the bus, it also allows for better entry and exit off the buses when you have to do that. So I would appreciate, but I think every year we're going to have to communicate this to the parents ahead of time so that they're aware of what's going on.
Okay, so you want us to vote this in, right?
Yes, so let me get back to the agenda. One second.
Kathy, while Greg's doing that, I just want to go on record, is that okay? I just want to say, same as everybody, really quickly, I really, really appreciate the work this task force did. It's an enormous amount of work and I think it's just fantastic that our kids are going to get more sleep. And my kids in my household agree with me too, they're very excited about this. They were hoping it'd happen this year, but they understand why. And I also want to echo Keith LaValle about. Helping the kids in high school take responsibility for their sleep too, you know, just. I know it's going to be hard, but just helping kids like maybe not have their devices in their room, you know, that's part of what's keeping them up at night. And, you know, just addressing that as part of this, being healthy and getting better sleep.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion?
Move for Northborough. Approve the start time task force proposal as presented in the presentation to be implemented in the fall of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so you're moving it for the region?
I'll second that.
Paul, wait a second, so Paul Desmond for the region, Paul Buck a second.
I'll move for Southborough.
All right, so Jessica for Southborough.
I'll second for Southborough.
Okay.
So move for Northborough, Keith.
So Keith for Northborough.
Second.
Kelly Garnett, second for Northborough.
Okay. Okay, so roll call. So Northborough, Keith.
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Southborough, Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Hamali? And Regent Kathy, yes, Kathleen Pledzko?
Yes.
Paul Desmond? Karen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Oh, yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Awesome, congratulations and thank you for all your hard work, Kathleen. And everyone on the start and on the task force.
I just want to.
Very exciting, yay.
Just want to point out that the power of a task force, so I know we started the meeting talking about a task force. And when you get great minds together, great things can happen. So I think this is just one example.
Exactly, agreed.
That's awesome. Okay, so our next is a strategic plan presentation.
So. So very excited tonight to present to you Vision twenty twenty-six. This work, as you know, began early in the fall. We were working with a Vision twenty twenty, and it's hard to believe that it's twenty twenty. So we spent the year reauthorizing and rethinking about where do we want to go in terms of what types of students do we want to graduate from Algonquin? So this evening, I have the pleasure of presenting the strategic plan. And this work is not not my work, but the work of a steering committee, the NASA leadership team, input from faculty and staff. And educators, input from families, and I I feel really represents well the work that we need to do. So again, hats off to everyone who was part of the Planning for Success Steering Committee. They provided great input and feedback into the work. And it was a large group, so we had we had quite a number of participants, which was outstanding. And we also had the Planning for Success authoring team. So the authoring team really took all the information and really tried to synthesize it and make meaning of it. And create a plan that was coherent and really met the objectives that we were trying to achieve. So again, thanking the authoring team for its work. So just a little bit overview of the strategic planning process. So when we engage in this process, we use a planning for success model, which is really a cycle. It's really create, align, implement, and assess. And we really believe that the work of strategic planning is dynamic, that it's supposed to be not a document that sits on a shelf. But something that that can be adaptable and flexible and a shift for the times. So again, these are the phases, create, align, implement, and assess. This year, we spent a lot of time assessing, thinking about where we were based on the work of Vision twenty twenty. And then thinking about where do we want to go? So what's our current context? What is the future that we're looking for to create for our students? And then backward designing it, so what types of actions do we need to take in order for it to happen? So I'll just talk briefly about the planning process for success that creates. So it's really designing and planning, analyzing the current context, envisioning the future, drafting and revising the the plan. So the Strategic Plan Steering Committee and Authoring Group and the feedback really centered on this stage of the Planning for Success model. So analyze, so obviously, we we weren't building on no plan. There had been a really strong strategic plan, Vision twenty twenty, that we took a close look at. The survey that was administered to create that the plan Vision twenty twenty was administered again through the strategic planning process. And we used the data sets to see where we've made growth and where we still need to make progress. We also had an external review, so we had experts come into our districts and our ten schools and really look at our operations, looking at our curriculum. Looking at our human resources and and our educators. And the external review was really instrumental in thinking about the work we had ahead of us. The SWOT analysis, so looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, something that we worked on. And then performance data, what metrics are important to look at in terms of thinking about how well we're performing and meeting our students' needs? And we had some quantitative data around survey data focusing on faculty and staff. And also our community parents and so forth. We had focus groups, we reviewed school improvement plans, and then eventually we looked at a root cause analysis. So what was this data, what story was this data telling? And what were errors we were trying to to grow and expand and and why were we stuck in certain places or we needed to grow in others? And. Hang on one second. So so now we'll talk about the create and envision. So a very important part of the work is planning for success. So in order to envision the future, we spent a lot of time thinking about what do we want our graduates, our Algonquin regional graduates to leave? In terms of knowledge, skill, and behavior and well-being. And so the questions that we asked were what habits of learning, work, and well-being will serve our graduates well? What skills and knowledge do our graduates need? So through the portrait of a graduate process, we had many sessions asking these questions. And to your right, the slide is one example of many of the attributes we would like to see our our graduates have when they leave Algonquin. We also thought about, you know, what is a portrait of an elementary student and what is a portrait of a middle school student? So we had the continuum. We had great participation from our faculty and staff, with students participating in this work and committee members. So I think the the process really yielded some great information. And then lastly, so it's what is our improvement strategy? You know, what are those those desired student outcomes that we're trying to achieve? And then, most importantly, what actions, you know, are connected to research-based evidence that, you know, obviously, all the work that we do, whether it's looking at start time. Really is focused on the well-being and the success of our students. So improvement strategy, desired student outcomes, and actions were part of the backward design process. So before we get into the specifics of our plan. You know, these are the components of planning for success model, so really, mission, why the organization exists, core values. You know, what you believe in, the principles that guide decision-making, the vision, your aspirations for students. Theory of action, the beliefs and assumptions, so if you if we do these things, then what will happen? So it's an if-then statement. And then we have strategic objectives, again, the coherent group of overarching goals and key levers for improvement. That will help us achieve the vision, which is considered the what and why. And the strategic initiatives, so you know, the projects and programs to support and will help achieve the strategic objectives to have. And lastly, the annual action plan, the planned action steps for the desired impact. So the planning for success model is a model that. So the Planning for Success model is a model that we adopted and adapted a bit. I also will point out that the school improvement planning processes that will move forward within future years follow the exact same model of planning for success. So there are parallel models that will be in play at the district level and school-based level. So mission, so we spent a lot of time looking at what does it mean to have a powerful mission? And one of the things we think is important is that it's a mission that we can remember and it articulates what we're trying to accomplish. So we came up with educate. Obviously, our primary mission is to prepare and provide our students with this knowledge and skills, be successful citizens as they leave Algonquin. Inspire, so we want to make sure that our students are inspired by learning, inspired by the change that they can make, inspired by the arts, inspired to continue to grow and continue learning when they leave us at Algonquin. And then challenge, you know, we want to challenge all of our students, challenge students in their thinking and their academic growth and their social, emotional growth. So those really three areas, educate, inspire, and challenge, make up the mission. Core values, core values are essential. And at this point, I'm going to introduce Stephanie Reinhorn, who is instrumental in much of the Planning for Success model and processes. And I'll have her speak a little bit about the core values and the work that we did to come to these six core values. And I'll just note that in the Vision 2020, the core values were respect, integrity, communication, and empathy. And many of those can be seen here as well. So there's some overlap from Vision 2020 to Vision 2026. So Stephanie, I'll give you, turn it over to you.
Sure. So much like we did with the profile of a graduate, we involved various groups in helping to identify the look back at the core values that existed in Vision 2020 and say, you know, what do we think should remain and what is missing? And so the steering committee participated in this, the administrative team and various teams. And over the course of the work, we pared it down to these six. There was, there were other important values that came up, and some of them are communicated in our profile of a graduate or in other ways in our plan. So we felt it was important, much like the mission, for it to get pared down enough that you really can say these are principles that we live by and govern kind of the way we work and make decisions.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Sure.
So the portrait of the graduates, so the work, the focus groups, and really thinking about what we wanted our students to be, you know, when, again, a portrait of an elementary student, a portrait of a middle school student, and a portrait of a graduate. So through that work, it was really great to see that there was a lot of consensus around our vision of our graduates. And it really came down to our students will be collaborators, critical and creative thinkers, communicators, socially and civically engaged, growth-oriented, healthy and balanced. And I'll have Stephanie speak to these a little bit more deeply.
Sure. So again, you saw the figures that at one point, if you'd walked into the district office, there were all of these representations of the portraits of a graduate that were coming from folks. And the, we have the six titles, kind of collaborator, creative, and critical thinker. But then within each one, we have more details of what that meant to people as they worked together. And there is really, really rich discussions in small groups as people work to identify the habits and attributes of our graduates. So we have collaborators. I won't read the whole slide to you, but part of what we were hoping to achieve with each of these attributes was that we have a tagline like collaborators that we can remember and hold on to and work toward. But then we have more detailed explanations of what we mean by that, that we can unpack and then figure out how we use them in our day-to-day work at all the different levels of the school or the system. So critical and creative thinkers. And, you know, so transferring and connecting knowledge and skills to deepen understanding, demonstrating thinking that's clear, rational, open-minded, and informed by evidence. And again, I won't read them all to you, but I think part of what you can see is, for example, here, use of disciplinary knowledge and skills in routine and innovative ways. Rather than having more and more categories, we tried to really synthesize and say, how do these ideas fit together? You know, we think the disciplinary knowledge is really important, and it is part of being a critical and creative thinker and empowers students to do that type of work. So that was part of the work that happened as we synthesized across all of the focus groups that worked on this. Communicators. And I think one of the things we were really working toward with all of these also was, as Greg said, we considered all the different levels and wanted to be able to think about any one of these attributes at any level of the system. What does communication look like with our youngest pre-K students versus how are we building communicators all the way up through the high school? Socially and civically engaged, again, same thing, we can really picture that at all different levels. And this was a topic that, and I'll point out with this one, that students actually spoke about this one a lot, which was, it was really fascinating. I think Greg will also echo this, that we had students at the high school participate in this process, but we also had middle school students and elementary students. And teachers helped to lead the process at different levels, at the middle and elementary level. And hearing their perspectives, there was lots of overlap with adult perspectives. And there were some things that they pointed out. And I remember clearly, Greg, I don't know if you remember, that students talking about, I'm going to be able to vote soon. And I need to know, you know, how to learn and be a good citizen in the world, you know? So they were talking about things like that, that we hope are captured in this. Growth-oriented, this was loud and clear across all groups that worked on it about, you know, sort of the mindset and the attitudes and the habits that we want our kids to have so that they're lifelong learners. Healthy and balanced, I mean, I feel like we've been talking about this all night, right? About the whole child, that we are supporting the growth and development of people and the whole, the whole package, right? And so, again, this was something that kids, parents, teachers, administrators, everyone talked about. How do we support our kids in having skills, knowledge, lifestyles that are healthy physically and mentally? And, you know, as earlier, Keith, you were talking about sort of sleep hygiene and sleep habits. These are all the kinds of things that we heard folks talking about that came into this aspect.
So this is, so one of the next level of work, which we'll talk about as we move through the plan, is really how do we market and how do we communicate this information? So this is one small prototype. Michelle Shepherd, who teaches in the Fine and Performing Arts Department, took on this challenge and said, can you create a visual representation that makes all these pieces connected? So this is just a prototype. But I think it talks about, you know, how the core values and the portrait of the graduate and the mission kind of intersect and interconnect to really think about the work that we're doing and moving forward with.
And I'll just add that the way Michelle's been working on this is this would be an interactive graphic where when you first see it, the detailed bullets that we were just looking at would not be visible. But you could click on growth-oriented, and then the bullets pop up. Or you could look at it without all the detail. So we're working on, again, in a website format versus a paper format, the different ways to make this really accessible and visible.
So we talked about the vision, and then obviously, kind of the pillar of the plan are strategic objectives. So we came up with five strategic objectives. The first really is empowering learners, so implement instructional practices that engage students in developing and demonstrating their knowledge and skills through rigorous, innovative, and relevant learning experiences. Equity of opportunity, so again, provide all students access to challenging, culturally responsive learning experiences that meet their individual needs. So that was something that was loud and clear in terms of the work that we've talked about in an area to continue moving forward with. Healthy and balanced learners, you know, prioritize social, emotional, and physical well-being of students. Educate our learning and leadership. So a part of the work, a part of the lever that we have in helping students achieve their goals and their experience with success are our teachers and leadership. And that it's not, leadership is not something just for the principal or just for directors. Leadership is a distributed experience that we all have a role to play, from our teachers to our principals, all the way to parents and students. So that was important. And then lastly, finance and operations to support teaching and learning. That obviously, that, again, part of the work that we do is really thinking about what outcomes. And then we think about, okay, what resources and tools and materials do we need to help achieve those outcomes? So obviously, finance is a lever and really thinking about our schools, our spaces that our students are welcomed into every day. So those were our strategic objectives. And I think that from there, we really looked at how do we take those strategic objectives and bring them to life and create action around those? So I'll have Stephanie speak to moving from strategic objectives to strategic initiatives.
So obviously, you cannot read what's on the slide, which is fine. But essentially, our strategic objectives are what we're placing our bets on, right? There are the things that we're saying, if we invest in empowering learners along with all these other things, then we expect to get the outcomes. For each strategic objective, we then worked on naming, and this was a lot of the work of the authoring group, which then went back to the whole administrative team, to the steering committee, and back and forth for feedback, and then to the community. We worked on naming the initiatives, which are how are we going to accomplish those objectives? What are the things that we are actually going to work on in order to empower learners or in order to create equity of opportunity? And one of the challenges that arose and that has been, there's been lots of revisions over time is that many of the pieces of work that exist cut across these five categories. And so sometimes, we had to make choices about where to put it. And yet, we recognize that there's a lot of connections across these areas. And then for each strategic objective, like for, if we look at equity of opportunity, for example, you could go, like Greg is, you know, hovering over 2.3, which is fostering culturally responsive and inclusive communities and environments. And then what he just did is click to the action plan. And this then outlines the specific actions that we will take in the coming year toward that initiative. An initiative, and the initiatives and the strategic objectives, the five objectives and then their initiatives, are our best thinking right now about from now till 2026. They could change over time, but they're our best thinking now. Whereas the action steps are our plans for the coming year. So that's something that's a little bit different from the, that the Planning for Success model has, you know, helped to guide us, and it's a little different than our past plan in the sense that it gives us the chance to have a really dynamic approach so that we can each year go back, reevaluate, say, what's our status with a given initiative? Is it in progress and it needs another year? Is it, did we not get to it yet, or is it completed? And if it's completed, what's next, or does it need to be changed? And so it gives us that ability to have a dynamic quality to the plan and to look at the budget each year and the impacts and resources and staffing and all of those things. So I don't know, Greg, if you want to look more specifically at any of the initiatives.
There's a lot of detail, but I think that, to your point, Stephanie, that this is a dynamic plan. And I'll just point out, you know, we began this meeting talking about creating a task force to really looking at, you know, bias and racism and how, you know, making sure that our schools, that every student, every single student who attends our schools feels safe, welcomed, and that they belong. So that is an example of where the task force might come together and identify action steps that aren't necessarily outlined in our current annual action plan. But the flexibility and the dynamic nature of it allows for additions to find and hone the work based on what we need. So again, action plans, and I just also want to comment that, again, much of this work, there's a through line. So we have our district strategic plan, Vision 2026. And following very similar processes in planning our school improvement plans and then our educator goals. So we're looking toward through line from our educator goals to our school improvement plans, the district strategic plan, so that there's a real coherent focus on the work we need to do. Although it might look different from school to school based on where school is, there's still that through line that exists as we move forward in the work. And lastly, so, you know, again, this year, we've spent a lot of time assessing and creating. And really, the real work comes from, I think, you know, bringing the work to fruition, really talks about connecting the goals, leveraging the resources, you know, building community commitment and support. So a strategic plan is not the district plan, it's the community plan. And it takes, you know, it takes educators, it takes students, it takes building and school leaders and families to bring this to life. So in the upcoming year, we're going to be focusing on alignment and implementing. So what are those actions, those annual action steps that we need to take? And then equally as important is monitor. So are we meeting the targets? Are we off-target? What is the data showing us in terms of our progress moving forward? And then again, the cycle. So strategic planning is dynamic. The last thing we want to do is create a plan that sits on a shelf that we take out in 2026 and ask, oh, did we achieve those goals? It needs to be something, a living, breathing document that drives our work. So that is a bird's eye view of our strategic planning process and Vision 2026. I think I'm very excited about the work. I think the steering committee, the family and community engagement in the process to get to this plan and NASA's work, I think, is exciting work to be done. And I'm really excited about moving forward with this. But we'd happy to answer any questions or talk about any item that came up that you would like to get more information on.
You know, I can't see everyone on my computer, so who just said something first?
I was one. This is Keith, and there was another male voice, I think.
Yeah, it was Paul.
Paul, okay.
Go ahead, Paul.
Well, thanks. So Stephanie, I just wanted to, I think this was your, if I break up, just cut me off. I switched.
We'll just kick you out.
But Stephanie, I think this was your first major presentation to the committees, and you did great. I know you were involved in this before you joined the district. I know you were involved in this before you joined the district and I think it's a terrific plan. I, I like the way it's done. Greg, I thought it was just wonderful that you managed to hover over an, an action plan item that talked about the, the faculty learning a lot about their unconscious bias, just what a coincidence that was. But I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a great plan. I, I can't imagine the amount of work that went into this. And, and impressed and looking forward to watching you implement it.
Thank you.
Okay, Keith?
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, I echo what Paul said there. This is a tremendous amount of work. I mean, having formerly been a speech pathologist, developing IEPs, you know, it's a small fraction of putting together the complexity of, you know, creating this kind of from scratch and, and all the stakeholders involved. It's, it's tremendous. I just have a quick question about how the pieces fit together. So specifically Greg, as you know, with like Northborough K to eight and, you know, the current status of the different school improvement plans, like what should we expect? How is this all going to converge like in the coming, you know, school year? And, and just maybe do walk me through what that's going to look like as, as things come together.
Sure. So one of the, so we did have a working group this year, the school improvement plan working group spent a significant amount of time studying and how do we, how do we look at the current school improvement planning process and improve it and align it to, to the district strategic plans? So the working group basically came up with a, a plan and I, I believe that's a presentation we can also share with the North High School Committee and South High School Committee. And it has a timeline of how we're shifting from the two-year plans to three-year plans. So next year we have a chart around where our schools be in terms of either reauthoring or extending a year. But eventually we will all be on the same timeline in terms of three-year plans and offering at the same time, which is nice. Because that's that through line that exists. And each year.
Go ahead, Greg.
No, go, and Stephanie, you know, you can probably speak more.
Yeah. So I, I worked with the school improvement planning committee as well. And as Greg said, part of the way that, that first of all, I would just say that the principals and central office of books who are involved in this sort of alignment were re, are really excited. The way it will work is that for some of the schools, they will be naturally finishing out a plan next year and then be in the process of authoring a new plan. Some schools will be extending their previous plan that, you know, would have been done, but they're going to extend it so that every school will be authoring a new plan next year that aligns to the new strategic plan and it will get everyone in sync. And we, we still do a next step is to figure out exactly what presentations to the school committees look like. Because in the past, people have been on these staggered schedules. What the principals are really excited about, among other things, is that by getting in sync, there is more opportunities for collaboration across schools. So that if they have shared professional learning needs, they can coordinate that and it aligns to their plan, which aligns to the district. The other thing you can expect to see that came out of that committee is that those five strategic objectives, empowering learners, equity of opportunity, those will be the strategic objectives for all 10 schools. What they will be determining at the school level is what does that work look like for us at our school? For where we are in the work, what are the action steps and initiatives that get more specific to our school, to our level and to this year? And that'll get broken down, but you'll see the common threads of those five strategic objectives across all the schools.
Okay. So that's basically more to come on that, right? Because that's taking shape and it's going to be an ongoing collaborative effort between to link these two together and make sure they, you know, the school at the building level, we benefit from all the work that's gone into this, this plan. Okay. Thank you.
Kathy, Joan Frank for a follow-up? Okay.
She's muted. Go for it. You have my permission.
Oh, thanks. I would just like to commend the group on this great project that you undertook in the years and the dedication into this. This is wonderful. I mean, every time we do a strategic plan, it just gets better and better. I have a question to follow up on Keith about what we could look forward to see in the school improvement plans. So will every school improvement plan have to have each of the five strategic objectives? And to it and what they're going to, and then the initiatives that they're going to do to support that objective?
So that is a great question, Joan, that the committee talked a lot about. And is, I think, at the time that we were doing the work of thinking about the school improvement plans, we didn't yet have a draft of the strategic plan. So one of the next steps will be saying, okay, now as we operationalize this, as Keith said, it's sort of a work in progress. But one of the things that came up was we talked about the fact that A, not everything will apply in the same way every year for every school. You know, you can imagine that facilities and finance is not going to be necessarily a key component of every school improvement plan in every cycle. So this, the committee and the administrators have already been talking about, are there ways for people to put some things on the front burner while other things are on the back burner? And we still seeing the alignment across the districts, but we're able to prioritize and focus in ways that help us to make better progress.
Okay. Cause that was my, that was my thought on number five, because it didn't seem that all schools could be doing that at the same time. Or would that be something that would be in a school improvement plan? And my second follow-up question, will we be, will all the schools then be doing a school improvement plan in the same format? As far as, you know, the alignment of the boxes, objectives, or is every school going to be able to, you know, develop their own school improvement plan format?
Another great question. The school improvement planning committee was very excited about coming to a consensus on using this planning for success with some modifications that we made as a district. But they are going to use the same template. And the principals were really excited about that, I think, because it's been, they have felt like each time they're sort of trying to figure out the format and sometimes borrowing from each other and sometimes going in different directions. So they had a lot of input and I think you'll see much greater consistency and lots of room for autonomy and creativity and innovation from school to school. But more consistency in the format and alignment.
I would just add that we've learned a lot along this journey as well. That the, the template and the framework has changed and been adapted. So I think, I think we're in a better place in terms of having a better understanding of what we want the formats to look like moving forward.
Okay. And Kathy, one last follow-up. Greg, does this have to be submitted to the DOE, your strategic plan?
So we have, the Student Opportunity Act requires us to submit a plan on how we'll be using the additional money from the SOA Act. However, that is a separate plan. We do not have to submit the strategic plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Okay, thank you.
But what we've done, just Joan, just to comment too, is what we've done is we've taken concepts from our strategic plan that we want to accomplish through the Student Opportunity Act funds that we'll receive. So we're using that kind of as, as a lever.
That's good. It's, it's, you know, it's a well-written document and it's nice that we can use parts of it into something else because it is our guiding principles. So thank you very much.
So I have to say like, I love, I love listening to this and reading this because I was in the library one day when you were doing this, the Portrait of a Graduate. So it's so nice to see what was going on there and how it translated onto paper. And I look forward to seeing how, you know, the next, you know, five years go, but I do love that you can, if you find that things are changing, that you can go through the plan and change it as well. So I would keep those posters too, that you have of the graduates. Like it was just such a great way to get everyone's input of what they thought, you know, a graduate or thin student or for me itself, or anyways, like looks like, I think that's, it was a neat thing to do.
I think there was a, you know, a big, I can't think of the right word, but it was, it was a big investment of time with a lot to gain. Because not only did it, were we able to synthesize, but there was a lot of building shared ownership and building shared understanding among those who participated. And that work will have to continue. Like that will be part of our work. You know, some schools, their whole faculty participated in that process and some schools, it was just some members. And so some of the work going forward will be to continue to have other or possibly the same sorts of ways for folks to engage and unpack and say, what is our shared understanding of this? So that we then can operationalize it.
I think it was important too, that you got, you know, you got, I think, I, I just watched the student piece of it, but I think that they have a lot to add. And having different groups of kids at different tables and having them give their, you know, what they thought, you know, family or student or faculty, like, you know, it's interesting what they come up with.
Well, and you would have enjoyed the third graders and the middle schoolers too.
Thank you so much for all the work that you put into this. Does anyone have anything?
Yeah, Kathy, can I just ask a question? Greg, when will this be accessible to the greater community? It's, I mean, it's amazing, the work that you guys did on this. I'm, I'm so impressed and I love the format and being able to like click through everything and read everything in detail. It's just, it's amazing.
So the boring format will be available tomorrow. We'll put it on our website, but Michelle Shepherd is designing a more interactive website for us. But we're also thinking about how we're going to market this and part of this is, is, you know, sharing this with the community so that there's, you know, community participation in the work. So thinking about how we can create other views depending on the audiences we're trying to reach. So the boring format will be available tomorrow and the next weeks and month will have the other iterations of the plan available.
I feel like the, the portrait of the graduates, I think that would be great to see the other ones too. I mean, just looking at that slide with the, you know, the actual portrait, that's so cool to be able to share those with the community. I think people would really like it.
So if you actually, kind of a sidebar, if you go to the presentation and you click on, I can find it.
I think it would be a great part of the website though, for it to be interactive, because they were so fun to have up in the central office.
But you can, you can see all of the portraits that were created. So we do have those and we can publish those.
Yeah, they're great.
It's a really excellent job, really, really well done, executive level, very impressive.
Thank you.
I have one last question. Okay. I just need clarification in 10 words or less. Action Plan 2020, 2021 on page eight, it talks about under 2.2, I MTSS reconvene, reconvene district committee focused on multi-tiered systems of support. What's MT, what is that group?
So.
Go ahead.
So basically MTSS is, is really our multi-tiered system of supports for our students. So making sure students get what they need. So it's a really response to learning. And it really speaks to making sure that if, you know, if we have learners who are struggling, that they get what they need to overcome their struggles. And, and conversely, if students need supports and, you know, for acceleration, that they get those supports. So it's, it's a multi-system of tiered supports. It's basically another way to look at it is response to intervention as a way of looking at it.
So that would be your ELS learners and also your student support? Is that what that would be?
It could be all learners really. So instead of a, a diamond, we're looking more like a rhombus. And, you know, we have learners across the continuum. So you might have a struggling reader who might need an intervention that might take six weeks and, and that once that intervention's implemented, the student then moves on and accelerates his or her learning. So it depends, it's not, it's not designed for any, any one particular group of students. It's really the continuum of learners that we have.
So is that building-based?
It's, we're working out the details, but it will be, the system will be MTSS and some of it will be building-based and some of it will be across, across the district.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Can you talk a little bit about the, maybe a proposed schedule for the frequency of getting updates on the progress of the strategic plan, quarterly, et cetera?
Yeah. So one of the, the next level of work that we need to do is really talk about what are those metrics? How are we going to measure progress? And then part of the work is really reporting on a, you know, a frequent basis to the school committees. I would think quarterly would make sense in terms of what we're working on, the work that we're moving forward. So that's to be determined, but I think quarterly sounds like a good, a good framework to kind of begin with.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay. So Greg, would you like us to vote this in tonight?
Yeah. So I think, yes.
So do I have a motion?
Kathy, for Northborough and the region, I move to approve the strategic plan, vision 2026, colon, educate, inspire, challenge as presented.
Okay. So Joan, it made a motion for the region and for Northborough.
I can put the region.
Paul Desmond, second for the reason.
Kelly Ginnett, second for Northborough.
Okay. And then I need Southborough.
So move for Southborough.
Katara for Southborough.
I'm second for Southborough.
Who, who, I, who went first?
Go Jen, Jen can do it.
And Jen for Northborough. Okay. So I'll start with Northborough. Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Southborough, Roger? Roger, still with us?
You're on mute, Roger.
I'll come back to him. Jessica?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Ben Regan, Kathy Key, yes. Kathleen Kletzko?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Roger?
I figured out the challenge of unmuting. Yes, thank you.
Press the spacebar, Roger?
All right. So, so Greg, that's great. We look forward to seeing what comes next.
And I just want to conclude by thanking Stephanie for her great work and leadership around this. It was, you know, it was a collaborative effort, but she really did much of the work and thank her for her leadership and NASA and ROTA. So it was a collective team effort. But again, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay. So our last item is your review, like your evaluation. So Keith, do you want me to hand it off to you for a few minutes?
Uh, yes, just remind me, we're going over the summary now.
Okay. So we're gonna, just for everyone knows, we're gonna go through the summary. Then we're gonna vote to approve. We're gonna leave the webinar and go to executive session on another due meeting. And then Greg will give me the host. So we'll see how this works. We'll talk, we'll go over, it will go over, I can't even think of the word I'm looking for.
Contract?
Just contract and executive session. We'll vote on that, bring him into that and then go back to the public and vote on that in public.
So do we come back to this meeting?
No, we just say in our executive session.
It just goes public?
No, but it just goes back into, yeah. Okay.
Yes. So we go, we go to the executive session, we never return. Yes, so we go, we go to the executive session, we never return to open meeting, correct?
No, we go back to open meeting, but because I'll, Greg will give me the host, I'll give it back to him, and then he'll invite the people who are, who are doing the filming back in.
And if anybody's in the waiting room?
Yeah.
Okay. The stragglers. Okay. Do you want to bring up the summary? You want to hand it to me? I can put it up.
I don't have that available, I don't have that available.
Oh, who's, who's presenting right now?
Well, you are, but Greg has it on his, Greg, you have your slides?
Keith, I just shared. You are now the host.
I do see the share screen. Wait a minute.
Keith, I just made you the host, so you should be good to, to.
Yes. I think we're good. Right, is that up?
Yes.
Okay, so we had, we ended up with 100% return, response rate on the evaluation survey. And so that, that would be 18 members participating. The reason that number's a bit odd is because there is a bit of overlap on a few of the committees. And just as a matter of interest, Ms. Lynn, I'm forgetting her last name right now, Winter, right?
Yes.
Did participate before she, before she left us. So basically, I'll just take you guys through this. I have to read all of it, Kathy, is that where we go with this?
Yeah, so we just read the summaries.
Including the text below, right?
Yes, if you want to do goal one, I'll do goal two, and we can go from, like, go back.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, all right, so as you guys know, there were some priority goals, and then there's some standards, and kind of some preset choices with respect to kind of Likert scale, I guess, with qualified statements about our ratings with respect to Greg's performance in these areas. So priority goal number one is to engage the school communities in developing a five-year strategic plan, focused on student preparation for college and career readiness, civic engagement, and community contribution, supported by an articulated improvement strategy. The overall rating was met expectations. We actually had a nine and nine even split. I would like to say on the record that I asked, first off, this is a rare issue, because committees usually have odd numbers. So it's just the way our, our weird and quirky district played out with respect to numbers and overlap on the committees with an even number. But what I wanted to also say was that I asked Greg, you know, what his take was on a 50/50, you know, because there's really no tiebreaker here, which is a bit of a conundrum. And again, it's not very common, so kind of no precedence for it. And I will have you all know that he said, put the lower rating, there's room for growth. So I want you to know what kind of a person he is when it comes to this stuff. Probably doesn't surprise too many people at this point. So I went with the lower when there was 50/50 split. Of course, it can be argued the other direction. None of it's relevant with respect to passing his test, so to speak, as far as the eyes of the Department of Education and desks. So just to put that all out there as we go through these. So 50/50 there between met and exceeded. And I'll just read this quickly here, despite, actually, before I read this, we, Sue Lawrence, by the way, also, before she left us, helped, she did the bulk of the work on compiling these. The, what, what she worked diligently to do is to bring in the themes from most of the comments, even constructive, you'll see those appear as well. There wasn't, you know, a ton of that, but those do appear. And I will also let you all know that the, all of your responses were, of course, recorded and exist on the record at Central Office and are, in fact, public record, should they be requested. So just put that out there. So that said, despite the pandemic, Martino has managed to maintain, sorry, significant attention on the strategic planning process. From the very beginning of his tenure, he has actively engaged with stakeholders. Martino has conveyed a genuine openness to the feedback throughout the process. Martino's honest, transparent manner makes people very comfortable when talking about district shortcomings, as well as areas where we excel. His holistic view of the profile of our learners takes into account their potential roles and citizenship in the global, global world, and the intertwined nature of character, interpersonal skills, and academic skills. Many members noted positive interactions with Martino while participating in forums, focus groups, and steering committee meetings. The process has been described as thoughtful and efficient. Each meeting produces tangible, fruitful results, an important barometer given the number of people and amount of time involved.
Priority goal number two was working collaboratively, collaboratively with school, yeah. Collaboratively with the school-based and district leaders to establish a common vision and understanding of learner, learning and teaching. So he, it would, he came out 50% exceeds expectations, 44% met expectations, and 6% significant progress. Martino has a strong vision, vision matched with resources, communication, professional development to bring this vision to fruition. It was noted that instructional rounds is an area of significant strength for Martino. He understands the inherent value of cross-pollination of ideas and synergy that can be achieved when educators work together to create a collective and streamlined, streamlined set of best practices in teaching. The instructional round model has seemed to help our district learn about the ways in which students can continue to learn and grow. Martino is in a standing job of being visible and accessible to those in the district. Members applaud Superintendent Martino for his drive to complete this process. A few members noted that the ongoing nature of this multi-year initiative and the impact of the pandemic affected their rating. While one felt significant progress had been, had been made, another noted, due to the nationwide closing of schools, it was impossible for three, for the three remaining action steps to be implemented or evaluated. Another member noted, it is still early in the implementation of instructional rounds, to see tangible, tangible results, but is a great example of an innovative program that puts our district on the leading edge of teaching and learning. Martino received a rating of exceed expectations for this goal. The overall team acknowledged that instructional rounds have been effective and is helping to improve our teachers' performances and should be considered into goal-setting process for the superintendent for 2021. Martino should be commended for the progress made thus far in this important initiative.
All right. Priority goal three, support effective instructional practice, student learning. Engage in regularly scheduled school visits to observe classrooms with principals and directors so that we can support and better align the evaluation process to help ensure teachers have the tools and resources to provide students with the highest quality of instruction. Overall rating, met expectations, another even split on this one. So half met, half exceeded. Comments, compiled comments, for so many educators and administrators, this is a desire, but Martino included it in his goals to ensure it was operationalized. Not only did he visit the schools, he established a purpose for the visits by setting an agenda. School-based leadership knows the goals of the visit and what to expect. It was also clear from his sample visit notes that Martino is getting lots of good information from the visits, hearing about successes and challenges, and staying on top of issues that need to be addressed. One member noted visits included academic subjects, but not fine arts or physical education. While acknowledging setbacks due to the pandemic, overall, Martino has attained a rating of met expectations for this goal. He's applauded for this effort, as there is no substitute for face-to-face visits to schools, both to gauge how effective they are and to simply be available to staff on site. Through this unprecedented time, Martino has navigated from an in-person to virtual learning environment, continually addressing concerns and adjusting as needed. He's effectively led the district to ensure that the teachers and principals have the tools and resources to provide students with the highest quality of instruction.
Priority goal on number four, develop the administrative leadership team, ALT, as a high effect, a high-functioning team with a shared vision for excellence in teaching, practicing effective instructional leadership in school climate and culture. So he was, he got 28% met expectations and 72% exceeds expectations. The themes throughout the member comments spoke of Martino's successful leadership and ability to execute, to execute a long overdue restructuring of the central office with incredible amount of thought and well, with the well-being of district at its core. The complex nature of our district demands tactful and efficient management of key directors and coordinators. He has successfully created a well-functioning team with a number of staff new to their positions. He was noted that the sheer number of positions he filled is rather remarkable, as is the quality of the people he recruited to fill them. Members acknowledge a difficulty of such a task and commend Martino on his ability to identify and develop talent, create a positive working environment, and build a stronger team in a prudent and well-considered manner. Martino does not shy away from a very tough decision and gets consensus from all stakeholders when doing so. His leadership skills foster collaborative working relationships and establish environments of mutual respect. He has worked to ensure that there is trust, confidence, and transparency, transparency through the central office and schools. Martino should be commended for building a quality and high-performing organization that has truly gone above and beyond throughout this very challenging year.
Very good. Next is superintendent's performance rating for standard one, instructional leadership. The educate, education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. Overall rating standard one, proficient, with 56%, 44% exemplary. This was such a uniquely difficult year, especially for a brand, brand-new superintendent. Members were impressed with Martino's efforts at providing informative communications to all stakeholders. It is noted that Martino really stands out in this area. He has a strong background in curriculum and data as well, as well as in theory and best practices. His vision and implementation of instructional rounds is another example of his innovation in this area. Also citing evidence through the various presentations to the school committee this year, it is clear that our district participates in data-driven decision-making at multiple levels, including instruction assessments and evaluations. This has been instrumental in progressing towards a cohesive shared vision.
So then this is the standard, that there's, what did you just read, by the way?
Standard one, that's okay. You're on standard, we're on standard two.
Okay, okay, sorry. All right.
I think Massachusetts law requires us to give you a five-minute break shortly, Kathy.
It's fine, I'm good. So superintendent's performance rating for standard two was management operations. Promotes learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. So the overall, so I, I apologize because I haven't been reading this overall rating standard. But he was exemplary, 70% exemplary and 22% proficient. Martino deserves to be commended and has certainly exceeded expectations for his efforts and achieve, achievements regarding management and operations. His supportive collaborative leadership style seems to be particularly effective, especially in assimilating the team that has operated with more coordinated effort that would be, that would normally be expected from one compromise of so many new staff members. Martino has built a dedicated team and organizational structure. In addition to effective organization and team building, Martino has been adaptive and responsive to every challenge, every, responsive to every changing educational and financial landscape. From the strategic plan to implementing instructional rounds, to name a few, Martino has proven to be an invaluable asset to the district. Particular attention should be paid to Martino's handling of management operations during the pandemic, which has created an entirely new set of challenges that were never even remotely considered going into this year, requiring creativity, innovation, and operation, operational ingenuity, which Martino has handled with flexibility and a positive attitude. He has demonstrated superior budget, budgetary skills by taking a fresh look at all three budgets. During the pandemic, he has carefully integrated political, legal, fiscal, and ethical factors into making decisions such as access to meals and remote learning technology. He effectively utilized resources and worked diligently with the town, school committees, community, and teachers association to make budgetary adjustments, adjustments during this difficult time. In this unprecedented situation, Martino remained nimble and planned for multiple scenarios, which speaks of his continued success. Martino has made great strides in all the, all of his goals, and members look forward to seeing what his diligent efforts, care, and attention to bring to detail to the district in the coming years.
And a quick side note about adjusting to remote learning, he was seen driving around town delivering lab Chromebooks to students, just saying, personally. Superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and community engagement, promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school district. Rating standard three, exemplary, 83%, 17% proficient. Martino received an exemplary, exemplary rating for this standard. Of particular note, the standard received the most comments. Overall, the themes echoed Martino's family and community engagement as impressive, exemplary, and outstanding. Martino has been extremely effective in streamlining communication and is consistently keeping all stakeholders informed of all the happenings of the district. Input is saw on a regular basis. He has proactively updated stakeholders with the pertinent information in a timely and concise manner. Martino is naturally collaborative and engaging at all levels of stakeholders. His calm and respectful style invite open communication and honest discussions. Many members spoke to Martino's response to the pandemic, impressed by his open prompt and clear communication with families, faculty, and school committee members. He has been very attuned to the concerns of staff and parents during the pandemic, working to ensure that their needs were addressed. In addition, outside of the pandemic, Martino continued the work of the school start time committee and brought it to resolution after many years of study. It demonstrates his results-oriented focus and positive results. He consistently came to thoughtful conclusions on steps to take by working collaboratively with as many stakeholders as was possible, thus crafting a workable, fiscally responsible solution, which was communicated effectively to parents and the community. All the while, he was mindful about family and community concerns and made clear that student safety and well-being came first. In a time that demanded strong leadership, he provided it. Members would love to see opportunities for stakeholder input continue in future years.
Okay. Superintendent's performance rating for standard four, professional culture. Promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectation, and continuous learning for staff. Overall rating for standard four was exemplary, 67% exemplary and 33% proficient. There was no end to the, there was no end to the stream of positive comments Martino received during this, regarding this standard. Martino has provided high leadership in this area of professional culture of the district and received an exemplary rating. Martino consistently demonstrates the highest standards of integrity, courtesy, respect, genuine interest, interest, and professionalism. He has an effective way of stressing the importance of high standards, cultural proficiency, and continuously learning. Martino's commitment to high standard is evident in every decision he makes. He has built a positive business culture in the central office, excellent communication, and established of values that inform, that inform decisions. He is a great listener as a consensus, as a consensus builder possessing a thoughtful, calm, and supportive communicating style. Martino is approachable, personable, and pleasant to work with. He welcomed, his welcoming demeanor and approachability will continue to serve him in our district well. Martino's continued commitment to professional culture is nothing short of amazing and is evident in his performance. Members were impressed by his commitment while navigating unprecedented, unprecedented challenges like triple E in the, in the pandemic. In addition to the implementation of instructional rounds and his leadership development on a new strategic plan, some of his other accomplishments this year, to name a few, including negotiation, multiple, negotiating, multiple successful collective bargaining agreements, introducing a community reprogram, making several significant and sometimes tough personal decisions, personnel decisions, managing a difficult and consistently challenging, changing budget preparation landscape, quickly handling some opening week issues with bus transportation, gathering and presenting input from stakeholders in dealing as success, in dealing as successfully. Compassionally and fiscally responsible as possible with edu, with the education restrictions and communication demands caused by these events. The members of the committees are thankful and pleased that Mr. Martino accepted our, the members in the, of the committee are thankful and pleased that Mr. Martino accepted our offer to serve as superintendent of public schools in Northborough and Southborough. We applaud and commend his tremendous efforts to lead our 10 schools, three districts, and one community of learning, learners continually in support of our mission of exceptional education, experience for every student in a safe environment. We look forward to the continued collaboration in the future. Respectfully compiled and submitted by Susan Lawrence, Kathy Key and Keith LaBelle. I don't think I've read that much in ages.
Well done guys, well done.
Congratulations Greg. It was, it was really nice to go through and read all the positive comments.
I mean, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to comment, but, but I will.
I'm not sure either.
Public record, you know?
So, so thank you for doing that work. That is not easy work, compiling all that data and, and writing the evaluation. A, I just want to thank the team that I work with that it's, you know, I feel like, oh, when you were reading, I'm like, oh, that's, that person did that work, that person did it. So it really is a collective evaluation. I believe it really showcases the work that the team at the central office has done from, you know, Heather Richards to Becky Pellegrino, to Marie Allen, to Julie Doyle, you know, to Rhoda Webb, to Stephanie. It's been a true collaborative team. And I just want to acknowledge that a lot of the work that was referenced in my evaluation really is not my work. It's, it's the work of, of a larger team. So I think that's important to say. The other thing is I don't, I, I disagree with some of the ratings. I'll be quite honestly, honest. I think exemplary is, is a very high rating, which I appreciate, but I also feel like it's, you know, there's so much, so much work and growth to do as a leader. And that's why I love the work because you, you could be doing this for a hundred years and still have much to learn and, and, and grow your craft and skill. So I appreciate the valuation. And I, and I, it's an honor and privilege to continue to serve as the superintendent on behalf of the students.
Okay, so, um.
Any questions if I, just before we, any questions about the, the survey itself, just that I could answer? Okay.
Just saying, any reference, do we vote this in as the committees? We vote to accept?
Yes.
So I think we, we vote to accept this and then we leave this meeting and go into executive session. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes. How about if I may then, before we have the motions and the votes, is there any, would anybody like to dispute anything or add anything they feel that was left out of the survey?
I would, this is Kathleen. I would just like to say that Greg, it's, it's an awful difficult job. And as I've learned my small job on school committee, I've come to understand your really huge job. And that what happened before the COVID, before we changed so much. And I do hope you feel gratified by these comments. Because I know that you've taken on a huge position and had to spend way more time than perhaps you bargained for, but did so nobly and admirably. And I'm really pleased to hear all of these reports.
Thank you.
I'd chime in on that. I'd second that Greg. I think the review speaks for itself. You know, I would describe it as glowing and deservedly so. And likewise, I just think you've done an outstanding job under really extraordinary circumstances. So I can't wait to see what kinds of things you'll be able to accomplish when you don't have a pandemic to deal with.
I don't think it's a parliamentary term, but I third that. I also agree. You know, what, what a year to, to begin your tenure as a superintendent in a complex district to begin. And then to have to deal with the whole COVID situation at the end. And also it was pointed out in the valuation, the whole process of reorganizing and hiring administrative folks in the central office and, and very successfully, I might add, quite impressive.
Um, I'd like to make a, a brief comment, which is just that I had the, the privilege, I would say, of being chair during Greg's first year doing this and so was able to interact with him quite frequently and was able to see behind the scenes even of his just utmost professionalism and thoughtfulness and diligence. And I really could just go on and on. And it's, it's been wonderful to see it in action and looking forward to some, some more future wonderful years with Greg. So thank you for all you've done.
Kathy, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I echo my committee members. I think Greg did an amazing job as first year superintendent. We had tons of unprecedented situations that you got thrown and you really rose to the occasion and did your best. As Katara said, she got to work firsthand with you and a lot. And I think what some people more, the chairs typically work closer with the superintendents than other committee members, just by the sheer volume of, of, of the size of our committees and the organization of how we are. So I would love to see, and I've said this for a few years now, that I'd love to see more community involvement and people firsthand who get to work with Greg on a daily basis, get to share their points of view too. Because, you know, as a committee member, especially last year, when, you know, I was, I was on the committee for a year and a month. And then you have to, you know, get served to do things. You don't necessarily know the ins and outs and the daily things. So I would love to hear more input to add to the glowing recommendations that we all see of you.
I'd like, Kathy, may I add my comments?
Yeah.
Um, I like to add that I think, I know that Greg, you and your staff earned your stripes. You have been applauded and your staff and assistant superintendent for strategic plan, the budgeting process, town meetings, but, and policies. All that takes weeks and weeks of work to do. And suddenly you earned your stripes when the pandemic arose because you didn't have any planning time. There wasn't anything that you could get, except your administrative staff together at a short period of notice. And you excelled in that. And I think that really shows the character of you as an educator, as administrator, and also in the ability to put together a good office staff that is supportive of you and also supportive of all the districts. So I think that shows us a true makeup of a leader and of his staff. So I'd like to applaud you and also your staff, true reflection, as everyone has said, of what a, of what a good leader is. So congratulations.
So can I just, the problem when you start listing names, you leave out people. So I left out two very important people and that's Keith LaVoye and Mary Ellen Buggin. And then if I've left out someone else, it's, it's because it's ten o'clock and I'm tired of it.
So I won't keep this so much, well, I know we have more to do, but, so I'm going to piggyback on Katara. I've gotten to know Greg very well in the past three months and over the year. And you are, you're a very thoughtful, nice, I think you're a good to the core person. And, and we've had some really thoughtful conversations. And I think that I, I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing the next few years of work that, you know, when we're not in a pandemic. Although, you know, maybe it's helped us in different ways, learn on how to, you know, teach and learn differently, but I'm looking forward to the next few years. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Kathy, I, I, can I just say quickly? I just echo what everybody said. I was actually going to say something similar to what Joan said about how your leadership, you, we can all see what, what a great leader you are in our meetings, but the fact that you surround yourself with such an amazing staff. Every single person that we deal with that works for, who works for you is, is incredible. And your whole team is amazing. And I also look forward to seeing what's going to be accomplished over the next few years.
So Keith, do you want to make a motion? Do we?
Yeah, I think we'll entertain a motion to, is there language on this? Can I hand the, hand this back? Let me check my agenda.
I don't, I don't see, like, I don't know if we've made.
Sure. I do have, Keith, if you want to.
Yes, stop, share. And then is there a second thing I need to do?
Nope, I think we're good.
Okay. Let's just vote to approve.
Yes, it's just a simple vote to approve a valuation as presented.
Do you want to handle it? It's not handle it to committee level, is it Kathy?
So technically it's the Northborough, Southborough Regional School Committee and Superintendentcy Union Three, but in the past it's been all, all four.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for the region and also for the Northborough School Committee that we accept with high accommodation. Superintendent Martino's evaluation for the school year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
Well, I'll second for the region.
All right. So Joan for the region, Northborough, Paul Bucka, second for the region.
Kelly for Northborough, second.
Okay. And then I need Southborough and then.
Oh, and Union. I can motion for the Union too, Kelly.
Okay, thank you Kelly.
Second for Union, Keith.
I'll make the same, I'll make the same motion as stated by Joan for Southborough.
Okay. I'll second. Katara, second. Okay, we only have three more roll calls. So, Northborough, Keith.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Southborough, Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Region, Kathy Key, yes, Kathleen Pletchko. Kathleen Pletchko.
I'm coming, I'm coming, yes.
Paul Desmond. Karen, Eric, Karen.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Okay, Superintendent's Union, Keith.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Okay, so now do I have to get a motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes, so we'll, so we'll, once you make the motion and we go into executive session, that's when we'll, we'll join the other Zoom meeting.
Okay.
So, does everyone have the link, I guess is the question?
There, there's a link to that?
Where is the link? In our emails?
Yes.
We were supposed to register in advance.
I know, people.
I will.
Greg, can you put it in the participants thing?
Yeah, as soon as we.
So then people can see it right now?
As soon as we get off, if, we conclude this meeting and we go into executive session, I'll send an email with the link.
So I have a motion.
Kathy, I move for the Northborough School Committee and the North and the Southborough Regional School Committee to move into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, parentheses superintendent of schools, end of parentheses, and to reconvene in open session.
Okay, so Joan made the motion for region and Northborough.
And I'll second for Northborough and region.
Okay, so one second, wait a second, for Northborough and for region, okay?
So moved as stated by Joan for Southborough.
Okay.
Second for Southborough.
Yes, so Roger, motion. Katara, second.
So moved for the Union, Keith.
Okay.
Kelly, second for the Union.
Okay, so another call. I can't wait. I. Northborough, Keith.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Kamali.
Yes.
Uh, region, Kathy Key, yes. Kathleen Pletchko.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland. Kathleen Holland. She's still here?
Oh, I think she, I saw something saying she left the meeting.
Okay. Sean.
Yes.
And then for the Union, Keith.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Okay, I'll see you guys in the executive session.
Yes.
Thanks.
I move that we agree with Superintendent Martino's request to forego his cost of living raise of two point five percent for the coming year and to incorporate his contractual healthcare related annuity from a one-time payment, not to exceed fifty four hundred dollars to his base pay going forward and to extend his contract by two additional years.
Second.
Okay, so wait, Paul Desmond for region, Paul Bucka, second.
So moved for Northborough.
Joan for Northborough.
Kelly, second, Northborough and Kelly for Union.
So Kelly, seconded for Northborough and made the motion for Union.
Second for Union.
For the Union and so moved for Southborough.
Roger can have it.
Okay, Roger.
Southborough.
I've had my fair share tonight.
Roger, seconded for Union, but made the motion for Southborough and Katara made the.
Correct. Sean, second for Region.
Okay, we're all good. Okay.
Okay.
So, Keith.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Kamali.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Kathleen.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yep.
Uh, Karen.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you so much for all of this, for all of your, like, staying with us at this point.
I just have one, one comment for Kamali and Karen that usually our meetings are like eight hours, so this is.
And if we were at the high school, the lights would be off.
I was afraid to, I was, I was afraid to mute myself for fear I couldn't get out of mute again, so.
I had them beat though. My first meeting was past midnight. It was with those two executive sessions where we had the financial.
Did you start at six though?
Yeah.
Did you start at six though?
I think it ended at twelve, the twelve, past, well past twelve.
That's sad.
Anyway, guys.
I was there.
I think Greg had something to say.
We've been at it so long, I'm hungry again.
Do you have something to say?
No, I don't. Thank you.
So you guys have a, I, I'm sure, I know we'll see everybody again, but have a great summer and thank you so much for everything for this year.
Hey Kathy, thank you for the wonderful job that you did and also stepped up to get us through this, these Zoom meetings and getting us on and everything and having the patience of a saint. But you did a great job as a chair, so hats off to you. Congratulations.
I want you guys all to know that it was my turn to chair a combined meeting and Kathy took, I was supposed to be in the hot seat tonight, so I appreciate that she took that, this one for me.
Unanimously.
So wait, Kelly.
Second for Northborough.
Joan, second for Northborough.
I'll make the motion for region.
Okay.
Second. Move for Southborough.
Roger for Southborough. Any second.
For the Union.
Second, Kamali.
Okay, wait a second. Keith.
Sorry.
Second for the Union.
So Keith and Roger, Union.
Kelly already made the motion, so Keith, you're seconded.
Oh, okay, sure. My second.
And then Kamali for. So Kamali, you did awesome tonight. So nice to meet you. So nice to meet you. I can't wait to meet you in person. All right, so Northborough, Keith.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Southborough, Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Kamali.
Yes.
Region, Kathy Key, yes, Kathleen Pletchko.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yep.
Karen.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Union, Keith.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Eleven seventeen, guys. Have a nice night.
Thank you very much.
Well done. Thank you.